So there are no additional reports in this section. So we'll start, just work through the city development. Are there any questions?
In relation to the T2GP going out for consultation this year, you're comfortable, Anna, with the level of budget that you have particularly for legal matters? Noting that we will have an in-house legal resource hopefully by that stage, but that they won't be RMA specific. Are you reasonably comfortable with the degree of budget that you have for that purpose?
Which year are you referring to?
The next financial year.
It's really hard to do budgeting for the T2GP because, you know, there's not a crystal ball in the world that can tell you what's going to happen once you put something out as a notified plan, how many submissions you're going to get, what the challenging issues are. So it is that year, and looking past notifications, it's almost impossible to budget. Given the way we've tracked over the last few years and that we've been able to make savings in a number of areas, particularly by reducing the use of consultants and doing more things in-house and also utilizing even planning students to help out, we're hoping that that trend of being able to save will continue into next year and that potentially this year that we can make some savings that we can then carry forward to help out with next year. I can't absolutely guarantee, but we decided for 2015/16 to be more optimistic in our budgeting, given the savings that we have achieved over the last few years.
Just a question about the narrative on the table on 13.1, the safe and healthy city section, the last section. I just found the last sentence about access to affordable healthcare services and what follows is odd. I thought that was out of place. Can someone explain to me why that? I mean, it's desirable, so is apple pie, but it's not actually the city's job and nor is the advocacy in terms of what the school might be, but I just thought that should be deleted.
Here in mind, these are the community outcomes that were set during the WACOF process. So that were about the kind of city we want to be. And across all of the community outcomes is a number of things that aren't our responsibility. This is one of them. And follow hot on the heels of the neurosurgery campaign, which is, I think, part of why it's reflected in here. So we haven't changed any of the community outcomes. I mean, the legal requirements around community outcomes have changed considerably since all councils set theirs. And I think it would be fair to say most councils aren't doing nearly as much on them because they don't carry the same weight. But the audit require us to still refer to them.
This is the whole of 13.
Or just the first book?
13.1. So, Councilor, on to resource consents, page 13.9. Any questions? Thank you, Worship. On page 13.16 and 13.17, where it covers on consent monitoring, and I was just trying to determine whether the $164 for 15.16 consent monitoring carries through as the same figure for the next two boxes on the following page. Yeah, Whiskey? So on page 13.17, but my question relates to... There's two figures not there, and I assume it is 164, is that?
Yes, it is, but I wonder whether we should check. We can check and tell you first thing tomorrow morning?
That's fine. Further questions? So, Councilors, this is 13.19 in your big folder. And I have an apology for late as we can ask a moment. Councilor Benson.
Thank you, Sister Mary. I have just a question in respect of both 13.19 and reference to the licensing costs and the service taken to do the same. I always have the understanding that post-new regime, that those licensing costs, the cost in relation to the cost, like, maybe it's supposed to be fully self-funded, not a period of time. Is that not the case?
The fees initially were estimated and have been adjusted. There was a little bit of uncertainty as to how they were being allowed over the first 12 months of legislation.
All right, well, it might be something we need to look at because my interpretation of the legislation and the material that came with it was that this was supposed to be a fully self-funded activity. And if that's not the case, then I think we need to look at what's happening.
I could probably add some comment there. My understanding is that once the cost of running the DLC was factored in and the various other requirements of the new legislation, that if it appears that if the regime were to be completely self-funded, it would be an unreasonable increase on the businesses applying for the licenses, et cetera. And so we, and as staff have said, it still has to be worked through, but it would appear that the rate payer is still going to have to provide some resource to make the system more...
Worship. The voluntary analyst, Ryan May, may wish to make a comment here.
Oh, thank you.
There's always a public funding, public interest portion, and that's the rate funding percentage that gets the... So in regulatory activities, there's always a public funding, public good signing.
Well, what about the actual activities of the district licensing committee itself in terms of gearing? Is that self-funding or is that also to the public purse for support? Perhaps we just have a note about this to a committee sometime?
Yeah, I can answer that one, I don't know.
I'll have to get a report in due course. Thank you. Further questions, Councilor Kell.
I'd like your team to tell us about what you're doing with the money that's coming and going with the dogs. I think it's good news and I think we should all know about it.
We take a zero tolerance to unregistered dogs. So we've, last year we employed an extra staff member and as of last week, we had 0.4% of our dogs, known dogs registered. Point, sorry, only 0.4% unregistered out of about 17,000 dogs, 17,000 dogs on record. Is that what you're indicating about, Hannah?
Yes, I was just impressed when I heard that. It sounded like you increased the number of dogs you had registered hugely so that the numbers that we, once we're registered, of course, we know about them and we can deal with them differently. And in the last year, the work that seems to have been gone on there in the proportion, it's gone up. It sounded like you were doing a lot of extra and good work to me.
Yeah, we've got only 60 dogs, 60 dogs from the previous list unregistered currently in the area.
You, Councilor Vans.
I note on 13.19 and some other places that the increase in fees has been pretty uniformly 3%. Given that this is twice the rate of inflation currently, is there any reason for going for 3%? Have you got considerably increased costs that you have to pass on to the tune of 3%?
Given that inflation is about half of that?
A 3% increase is in line with the fees that have gone across council.
Yeah, that's really my issue as a rate payer's representative. It's certainly in line. It's almost like a lockstep. My question is, why is it in line with a level that's double the rate of inflation?
So, what staff were instructed as, last year, you may recall, there were some fees that went up 8%, 10% and there was concern that whilst we'd been very tight about the rates rise as we sought to bring down the rates increases from previous years, we hadn't applied the same rigor to fees. And so what was given to staff was an instruction that maximum fee rise was also to be in line with the rates rise. So it's just worth noting for council that yesterday we were talking about the BURL Local Government Consumer Index, which is different to the CPI. For what it's worth, the rolling average or the 20-year average for the BURL LGCI is in fact just a little over 3%. So you're fixing the rates limits at 3% long-term. Actually, as it happens, brings it pretty much exactly in line with that 20-year C government CI. I think the biggest contribution to this area is there's a lot of staffing costs and those increases are around about 2%.
So we're, we've got a situation where the partners have been told there's got to be a maximum fee rise of 3%?
That's right. I mean, it wasn't a compulsory rise of 3%, but it was a maximum rise. So some fees have gone up 3%, some haven't gone up at all, but the maximum rise is 3%. I mean, unless we're passing on a cost from somewhere else.
Okay, so and the reason for the 3% is because of staff increasing costs mainly?
In areas where the major cost is staff, then that will be the major contribution to their cost increase.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Am I correct in believing some costs didn't go up at all last year? And if one took the rolling average, then a 3% increase over two years actually is in line with that anyway?
Oh, that's absolutely right. A lot of fees, some of these fees haven't gone up for some years.
Thank you. The other question I had, and this is about an operational one that I've raised with staff before, but one of the ways of reducing costs is to make it cheaper for the applicant by electronic means of registration of dogs, for example. Where are we at in ensuring that this becomes a really simple system to registered dogs rather than having to go through the CSA as you have to do at present?
We're making quite good progress with electronic applications across the board. We've got electronic applications for builder consents now and we're not far away, and by far away, we think at the start of the next financial year, from having that ability for dog registration as well.
Right, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilor McTavish.
I just, I noted Councilor Hawkins' question about the skateboarding issue, page 13.34, the inclusion of skateboard seizure in storage fee, and just would endorse the removal of that, given the absence of the bylaw. Don't know whether it's something that we just need to note. And the other thing was, it's very minor, but on page... Page that deals with stock, page 13.24, under stock impounding charges, just need to change whatever 55 is to some form of stock.
Councilor Wilson.
Just because it's just come to my notice looking at skateboarding, but right under skateboarding on 13.34, the noise, excessive noise equipment seizure fine. What is driving an increase from $58 to $255 for that noise? Some stories about this last year with, possibly not here, but people aggrieved when you've also increased substantially the seized equipment storage fee.
That is to reflect the staff time, the actual staff time. We are increasingly getting more and more problems with noise and seizure of equipment. And we end up with the officers spending several hours on the night and staff spending a lot of time dealing with the offenders and also dealing with the property owners and if it's the leases of the stereo equipment. So we really need to be recouping our staff time and cost. And it is, sorry, I just wanted to let you know that it's also, I've looked across the councils in the country and Wellington, Christchurch and Auckland do chart for a similar crisis.
How many do we charge per annum that fee?
Currently, we're not, we're not charging that.
No, sorry, 80, sorry.
Sorry, I'd have to go back and look at our figures, to be honest, but it would be in a couple hundred at least, I would think.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Joanna, thank you. Nicola, we might address the issue, since we're at the end of that section, if you'd like to come up and I'll address that question that was asked yesterday, the resource consent.
So just following up on the question from Councilor Noon yesterday, on page 13.6 of the resource consent fees and charges, the question was asked about whether the $164 fee, which is shown in the last column, also applied to the two blank boxes on the following page.
13.16 and 13.17.
Sorry. The answer is that in the final plan, those boxes won't appear. They're only there because we're showing, in the previous years, we've had different fees for different numbers of inspections in 2013, 14, 2014, 15. That doesn't apply in 2015, 16, so those boxes won't be there. So there's a single fee.
Any questions on that? All right, that would appear to be all in City Planning Regulatory Services, so I will move recommendations one to three. Secretariat Councilor Staines, on section 13. Is there any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Oh, there's, I'm sorry, I omitted to look over the page. There's a recommendation four, so in line with that, I shall move from the chair. Recommendation four, Secretariat Councilor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Thank you. Now, we go back to all that we lost services, I believe. And this is, starts at page 12.1 in our big folder. Do you think we've got one to preface this or do you want to go to the chair?
We don't do the full of the books, or?
Yes, we, well, yes, we do the 12.1 and 12.3 and then the report. Well, I see actually that the reports are mixed up in here. I see they're done in a way, we do water supply first and then the reports that relates to water supply, which is the fluoridated, fluoridation or non-fluoridated water supply report. Then we do wastewater and then we go to the report related to Cavisham Tunnel, Sue and Manval Centre. So that is here, be the way we're doing it.
Okay.
Jane, that's the way you, right, thank you. So we'll start, yeah. So we start with waste and water services summary and then water supply on page 12.3. Are there any questions? Councilor Kell.
Still an overall sense, and obviously I didn't hear this on its way past at some point, but we did have in the long-term plan, money set aside for tahuna consent stuff that we didn't need to do after all, did it?
Could you explain a wee bit about? It's lovely, yeah.
I think you're probably referring to the biosolids project that's ongoing at the moment and particularly the ash removal side of things. We had hoped by now to be able to tell you comprehensively whether or not we were going to need... There's around about a million dollars that's in question. It's actually in the current year's budget, based on the trials of the ash separation. Unfortunately, we've had a few hiccups with the incinerator failing on a couple of occasions, so we haven't managed to finish that trial at the moment, so we still don't know. So that money is still in the budget in case it's needed for additional ash treatment, but we're still not sure of whether or not that equipment is going to be needed or not.
Councilor Hawkins.
Thank you, Worship. Just a question about the DIA mandatory measures on page 12.9. Whether the, and the measures are set by the DIA, are the targets also set by them? Or can we set our own target within them?
No, the DIA simply said that you must measure this. The targets are entirely at the council's discretion.
So because aiming for less than 20% water loss seems really high, that's an indication of our aging infrastructure, isn't it?
It's a combination of two things. One, the higher pressure your network is at, the greater your leakage loss will be, regardless. But any system will have, I think some of the world leaders are still close to sort of 8% or 9%, 10%. So any, any system will have a reasonable amount of loss that's unavoidable or at least uneconomic to get to. We have got some work that will be ongoing in terms of calculating what is actually an economic level of loss for us. But that is simply a representation of a combination of the age of the network, the condition of the network and the fact it is a very high-pressure network because of hills.
Councilor Dixon.
Page four there, 12.8, I'm just having in the priorities at the top of the page, having some difficulty seeing the relevance or appropriateness of the last three. In terms of the narrative about the water supply, people have access to affordable healthcare services, but like yesterday's comment, even housing is more than health.
I'm going to refer to Jane because I think that's just standard.
We just have been showing the entire priorities for each outcome, not the ones that are just specific to each area. I can put a highlight on the ones that are specific to each area in the final, if you want me to. That's the, that's standard content.
It's a bit old, isn't it? Sorry. Thank you.
I can address that in the final then, yeah.
Thank you.
You've done a question. Councilor Dixon, your fifth question. Councilor Prendergast.
I'm not sure if this is quite the right part of the meeting to have tasked a question, but Councilor Prendergast, many years ago, highlighted the problem that would happen to our water supply, especially deep stream catchment, et cetera, in the event that there was a fire that creates a lot of ash, which would mean we couldn't use a lot of that supply. Given the very, very dry conditions that we now currently have and the flash grass fires and the possibility that even a thunderstorm might actually trigger quite a large fire in the water catchment area now, do we have any budget or any Plan B in the event that there's too much ash in that water catchment for us to actually use that water?
So I think it would be two years ago now, the council approved the security supply strategy and that dealt with not only the risks about the Tari Bridge failing, but also addressed any of the issues that might take those supplies out of, out of use, whether that's severe drought, fire, the loss of one of the treatment plants. So that is about bringing the Ross Creek and Sullivan's Dam catchments back in as backup storage. That's the dam safety work that we're doing at the moment that will allow Ross Creek to be refilled and also the pumping station that is in the capital programme to allow the southern, the water that feeds southern to be pumped up to mount ground to then be distributed. So whilst it's not a perfect solution, it will give us a much, much higher level of resilience against anything that would take those, those critical supplies out of use.
Right, so do you know if there was a sizable fire in the catchment area, how long it would be before you could start using that water again?
If it, certainly not, in terms of bringing that particular supply back into use?
Yes.
I don't know that, but certainly once the critical projects of the security supply strategy are in, if we put water restrictions in, we could feed the whole city without it for effectively an indefinite period of time with restrictions.
And how long will it be before the Plan B, the Ross Creek and all that, how long before they are actually operational? I understand you're working towards it now.
So the southern to mount ground pump station is built, just awaiting commissioning. That should happen in the next couple of weeks. So that's the first step. That sort of gives us about 90% resilience, if you like, in terms of the strategy. In the Ross Creek Dam, we're waiting a building consent for the, for the dam rehabilitation works. We've been waiting for that for about six months from the ORC and just working through various design issues. We're ever hopeful that it will arrive in the office any day now and we can start construction.
And that project will be finished when?
I know it will be finished probably nine to 12 months after we start construction, depending on what time of year we start.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilson.
Just taking Councilor Vandervis' point further, considering the potential risk at the moment with tender, tender dry conditions, what are you doing to restrict access in that area or consulting with DOC and access to the area adjoining it?
I'm not sure in terms of consultation with DOC. We actually have fairly strong restrictions on a lot of our catchments anyway. A lot of them are only accessible to hunters and things through permit systems. And so they, that, and when people are applying for permits, there's sort of general information provided and restrictions as to what they can and can't do and where they can do it.
At the moment, they can still get those permits, though?
Those permits are issued for a 12 months.
Any further questions on water supply before we go on to the report? Councilor P.
Just in light of the current dry conditions, it sort of reminds people that we, you know, have a situation which we have to be careful in and restrictions apply. Can you paint a picture of the reliance we place on deep stream and deep creek in terms of the total water supply for?
Yes, to some, to some degree. So at the moment, particularly for the high-level areas of the city, so that the hill suburbs effectively, we are almost totally reliant on those catchments. We have enough water that can get to southern, but we don't have the infrastructure to pump it up the hill. That's what the pumping station will do, so that will actually allow us to take that, that water. I guess one of the other things that is pertinent is that the nature of the deep stream pipeline means that we cannot vary the amount of flow through that pipeline through choice. If there is water there in the river, we take the full bore of that pipeline and anything we don't use goes down Fraser's Creek, Fraser's Gully. And that has been one of the constraints. That is because of the concrete sections of the pipeline. If we try and crank it down, it causes water hammering the pipeline and it will effectively, it will blow the pipeline up. When we renew that pipeline, which is due to be around 2036, we will obviously design that so we can choose to take less water. But that has been a major constraint at the moment in terms of what, what options we have available to us to, to leave water in, in the upper tary.
And just in terms of how much water we do get from deep stream and deep creek, is it around about 60% of?
It's about, yeah, 60, 70%. I think it's about 40,000 cubic?
And in the past, I mean, we, climate change is predicting, you know, the forecast of dryer conditions over.
So the actual predictions, we've had, we've had the catchment yields looked at in the light of, of climate change and that report actually demonstrates that the overall annual yield from those catchments will increase, but it will become more peaky. So, and they are run-of-river catchments, but it's certainly within the bounds that, within the through-water strategy which looks out 50 years and has looked at all of those things, that we're comfortable is manageable.
Well, we just add that 60 to 70% that we take from deep creek and deep stream at the moment, that's more to do with the economics of the water. We can gain about 90% of what we need from our other catchments. It's just that it's cheaper water because it's gravity-fed and it's generally quite clean and clear, so we can deal with it. so we can deal with not being able to take that water. It's just if we can take that water, we do, because it's most economical.
Right, no further questions on that. We'll go on to the report per age, page 18.2.1, fluoridation of non-fluoridated water supplies. Would you like to...
I guess simply to comment, this was a report that was actually requested from councillors this time last year.
Questions, councillors? councillor London?
Thank you, Bishop. Just two questions. One is around currently what percentage of the reticulated network or the population that receives reticulated water, receives fluoridated, reticulated council water?
It would be in the region of 80%.
And with the balance that receive reticulated water, but it's unfluoridated, has there been a request from any of those residents to have fluoridated water added?
Not specifically, as far as I know. Certainly the submissions to last year's annual plan, there were some generally supportive of fluoridation, some very much not for fluoridation. But I've personally not seen a specific request from anybody requesting it in a particular community.
Right, councillor Hawkins?
I was just going to do that after the move, the report be noted, but councillor London's walked to it.
Maybe a move that the report be noted when you're ready.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, councillor London, second to councillor Hawkins, you're moving that the report be noted. Okay, speak... do you want to speak to that?
Look, my only comment would be around, I appreciate that we did ask for the report and we knowledge that it's important to keep, I suppose, abreast with... Keep abreast with community concerns. Clearly, there's quite a significant cost to deal with these areas around the periphery of the city, and I think at this time, there is no point, no desire, either financially or from the social well-being of our community to drive for greater fluoridation of these outlying areas.
Discussion. councillor Vandevos, then councillor Thompson.
I just wanted to note or remind people that Jarrod Colling, in his address on behalf of some of the northern villagers, said that if we were to contemplate adding fluoride to their water supply, that he would be very keen that we did some very good consultation with the people concerned first. And he made the comment that it wouldn't be appropriate for us to supply fluoride to people that may not actually want it. And I thought that that was a reasonable comment on the part of the chair of that community board.
councillor Thompson?
I've taken some advice from the governance officer around a potential conflict of interest here. She advises me that I don't have a conflict of interest in terms of discussing whether this goes into the annual plan for consultation, but I would need to withdraw in the event that a vote were being taken at the annual plan. So, I shall take my one and only opportunity to have some input. I think that noting the paper is simply a shorter way of saying countless, and that it would be appropriate, in my view, to allow the community to have the opportunity to input on whether or not they wished us to input this money. Firstly, I believe it's a public health measure that has value. I accept that you can argue where the cost of that public health measure appropriately lies. We have adopted it as a public health measure over many, many years over most of the city. We haven't done it overall. There are various reasons for that, including engineering ones. The cost is high, and that, I think, would require some considerable thought. But I think that noting it is simply a way of avoiding conflict. I appreciate I shall be outvoted in this matter, but I think we should have given the communities the opportunity to respond.
councillor McTavish?
I was going to say something, perhaps not quite as strongly worded as that, but I do believe that we have a responsibility to make sure our communities are aware of the options that are available to them and the benefits of an approach that comes with fluoridation. And I'm not sure that noting the report does that. I think we would be better to forward this report to all of the affected community boards with a note that staff are available. And the public health teams have also reiterated their availability to discuss the issues with the community boards and/or the communities by way of a public meeting or other appropriate mechanism at any time. That's my view. I think the community boards themselves receive a plethora of information at annual plan time and may not have got through the whole lot. And it would be worthwhile highlighting the availability of expertise to help them drill down into these matters more deeply, should they wish to do so. I don't think that imposing fluoridation on communities that haven't formed a view on it and approached us is appropriate. But I do think that we have a responsibility to make that information available, as available as it can be, to those communities. And we would do well to take the opportunity that has been tabled in front of us and make that available at this time. So, should this motion pass, I guess I'm signaling a consequential motion, which is that we do exactly what I've just said we do.
Well, one option is, which wouldn't contradict anybody's views, would be to note it and include it in the consultation document as an unfunded item, which... But that's just a suggestion. councillor Thompson, do you?
Well, I'd just, in the interests of everyone's sanity and the fact that annual plan hearings are probably best to last not long in a week, my view is that the community should be consulted. My view is that the mechanism for doing that should be separated from the LTP, in my view, because I think otherwise...
Whoever else wants to move anything consequential, so that's fine. I'm just trying to address the issues that have been raised. So councillor Wilson?
My point's been covered now.
All right, no more discussion. councillor London, do you wish to...
Well, my only comment would be around whether the community boards have had the opportunity to see the report. Well, we've received a submission from each community board, and the submission has been based on this document. I know that they didn't all physically receive that document, but they had access to it. So, if we were to... I hear what councillor, both councillor Thompson and councillor McTavish are saying, but if we were to forward the report to the community boards, I assume that the staff recommendation would be to note the report. I'm not actually 100% sure why would we be double, essentially double-dipping or following a process twice, but I would accept that if that's what people, the majority, want to do. But I'll just come back to the point, probably with regards to councillor Thompson's issues around dental health or the health and well-being of our communities. If we've got some factual evidence to back up, there are areas of our city that have major, or the residents of the areas of our city that have major dental issues, way beyond what would be deemed the sort of the average, so to speak. Well, then let's look at addressing it. But I think in fairness, the document has been available for the community boards' consumption, but I accept the wider community hasn't had that opportunity. So I would certainly concede to that option, that it goes to the wider community in some form, whether it's in the LTP, draft annual plan, it doesn't worry me.
Okay, I'm going to put the motion, which is that the report be noted. All those in favour, please say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Against? Carried. Now councillor McTavish, do you want to wish to move something?
Still scribbling. I'll bring it up, Pam, or email it through to you. That's just a two-part, that the report be forwarded to the relevant community boards for information and that the availability of staff to discuss the issue and costs and the health expertise available on fluoridation be highlighted.
Okay, is there a second to that? councillor Thompson? Okay. Do you wish to speak any further to councillor McTavish? Thank you. Are there other speakers? Well, I assume you don't want to exercise your role in reply either. So, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Against? Carried. Thank you. Now, on to wastewater, page 12.1.5 in your big folder. councillor Wilson?
Just noting page 12.12.2.5, where you talk about the Artrum reticulated sewage potential, or possibility thereof, and...
Sorry, which page?
12.2.5. Second, or third paragraph on that, third sentence? I think this is the old one. Oh, sorry. Just, have we got... sorry, I haven't got the other one handy. Have we got a update, expectations? You talk about... No, this is about waste disposal system in Artrum, this will be programmed in due course. Have we got any updates on that? This is a question directly from the Moskyl Tari Community Board.
No, we haven't produced a full report on that at the moment.
No, but have we got any idea when that work may be scheduled?
A report on the total costs, or...
No, not a report on the need for and... I don't think it's necessarily the costs. It's not saying that you're definitely doing it, it's looking into it. Investigate wastewater disposal systems.
Sorry, councillor Wilson, can you just tap... I'm not sure what you're asking me.
So, a further recommendation from the assessment was to investigate wastewater disposal systems in Artrum to determine the most sustainable and appropriate long-term arrangement. This investigation has not commenced to date. And blah, 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 but we've programmed in due course. And I'm just wondering, have we got any certainty?
No, we haven't programmed that yet. We haven't programmed that yet, but we can.
Okay. It's just, the Moskyl Tari Community Board asked for that work to be done, and I'm just wondering, because I will be there at the visit next week, is it likely to be one year, three, or two year or three year?
I guess, at the moment, all of our resources on that, of that nature, are focused heavily on the renewals programme and prioritising that renewals programme. So, in order for that to be done, I guess realistically, within the one to three-year timeframe, that would need to be something that the council would want to indicate, that they want to dedicate...
Or they can submit on.
Yes, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's just not clear, I mean, in due course for me probably means within three years.
In reality, it probably doesn't, unless there's a clear steer that that's somewhere.
Thank you.
councillor London, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Bishop. The question is the same question I asked Mr Feather when he presented on behalf of the Moskyl Tari Community Board, and it's around any advice that we have had from the Targa Regional Council about issues to do with contamination. So have they raised formally with the Dean City Council in any shape or form?
No, I mean, the concerns that we've heard raised have come from the Artrum community rather than from the regional council.
Right, so, in terms of contamination, we have, we haven't been instructed to respond in any shape or form by the ORC?
We haven't, certainly haven't been instructed. We haven't, they haven't even initiated any discussion that there was concern.
No further questions?
councillor... Can I just ask about the Tari, you know, UZ disinfection system and just how that is operating, you know, for the safety of that?
To the best of my knowledge, I haven't asked the question of quite of late, but certainly it's been working effectively. One of the things that he has been doing overall is looking to try to reduce our energy costs because they have been higher than we had possibly anticipated. He seems to have done that successfully, but, and the energy costs have come down quite a lot, but what he is now doing is just checking that we haven't tipped too close, but certainly we're operating well within our resource consensus.
No further questions? Okay, we'll move on to the report. Cavesham Tunnel Sewer Manhole Ceiling, that is on page 18.3.1.
Could I just add a... I probably should clarify, I was asked a question to be more specific around, the report refers to overflowing within the manholes, within the tunnel, and the fact that that would, if we sealed the manholes, it would occur elsewhere instead. Unfortunately, before the report was prepared, I hadn't had the opportunity to model that impact. That's now been done. So just for clarity, if we seal the manholes, what it will actually do is it will increase... It's linked to probably one of our more challenging parts of the network. So what it will do is increase the frequency and, well, certainly the volumes that discharge out of the two overflows into the Kaikara Stream and also into the area that floods around Surrey Street. Exactly how frequently that would occur and how much worse it would make it is always questionable with modelling work. It's always, and there is also a risk it would actually cause flooding in two areas that don't currently flood. So it is certainly not something that would be done lightly, but it is also fair to say that without sealing the manholes, it would be very difficult to open the tunnel. And certainly, because that is one of the biggest reasons that we restrict access to the tunnel because of the risk that there will be puddles of spilled sewage within it. So I just think it's important that that's clear of the scale of the potential implications.
Questions, councillor, councillor London?
Just following up on the issues around Surrey Street and Kaikara Valley, I can recall in the past that there was a program put in place to try and maximize the efficiency of the existing sewer. So in other words, there was some inspection done and it was determined there was a certain amount of the capacity of the sewer that wasn't available because of historically it built up over time and it wasn't moving the way it should. So where are we at with that program? Because I understood that was going to go on for a number of years, and it comes back to the Surrey Street issue and whether we've actually alleviated that problem in recent years.
So I think what you're referring to is the main intercepting sewer and the cleaning work that was done on that. That was done and identified before we'd done the whole of the three-water strategy and all the modeling work. And it will have helped, but what we also identified through that modeling work is that the problem is far more complex than we had ever imagined. The problem on Surrey Street is actually caused by inflow and infiltration in the whole of the Kaikara catchment, so northeast valley or both sides of the Kaikara Valley influence right the way through to Surrey Street, and they are intimately connected to the overflows that go into the Kaikara. Effectively, the whole of the sewage network in that part of the city is overdue for replacement. And if you look in the infrastructure strategy of the peak that shows the backlog of renewals, that backlog of renewals, which is valued for wastewater around about $40 million, most of that, not all of it, but a fair chunk of it, is those sewers which are in a very poor condition, letting in a lot of stormwater. So that is putting pressure right the way from northeast valley, down Kaikara Valley, through the Cavesham Tunnel, out to Surrey Street and beyond. Having looked at a whole range of different options available to us, by far the most appropriate and cost-effective is simply to get to the root cause and work our way through a program of renewals. And most, a fair chunk of the wastewater renewals planned over the next 10 to 15 years are targeted to this, so there's a $7 million package being prepared at the moment. There will be other packages of that size following on. We're also looking at, because it's a massive catchment, at effectively disconnecting parts of the catchment from each other, so taking part of the catchment out in Hillside Road area and diverting it somewhere else to alleviate pressure. But we're talking about a sustained program over 10 to 15 years to fundamentally really make a big impact. There's lots of things we can do that slice a little bit off, but anything, I mean, we've looked at storage, we've looked at all sorts of options, but they all come back to we need to address the root cause.
So can I follow it up with another question relates directly to the report? The Cavesham Tunnel manholes. So the seven or eight manholes or whatever that is planned to seal... So, the seven or eight manholes or whatever that is planned to seal, what percentage of overall manholes that would be available for discharge, would that be in the network from there through to Surrey Street that wouldn't affect residential activity?
I'm not sure I understand the question because at the end of the day, it's the levels within the manholes. So, it's whichever ones are the ones where it comes out. Yeah? So, if we seal these two, unless we lower some other ones, and I'm not sure how we would do that, that is where it will come out.
Okay. It's levels rather than numbers.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's unfortunately why, without having the insight of the modelling, ordinarily, you would expect it to be a fairly localised effect. Unfortunately, not so in this case.
Councillor McTavish?
Yeah, I'll just follow along from that. I'm just wondering whether it would be possible to raise manholes?
You always can. It will always find its way out. And I have seen, not in this circumstance, I've seen them where they've been raised two metres to avoid the effect, and you just end up with a big chimney. It will still come out somewhere else. If the system is full, it will come out. And the question is, it's very difficult to control where.
Yeah. So, if, for example, there were one or two of these locations that we particularly wanted to try to avoid the issue occurring?
So, for example, in Surrey Street, what actually happens is there is an overflow chamber that overflows from the foul sewer into the stormwater sewer. But the stormwater sewer is then, has not got enough capacity. So, it's actually the stormwater sewer that overflows. But it's got wastewater in it by the time it does.
The, excuse me, the other detail to remember is when you raise a manhole, you might be lifting that manhole above the properties to the side. So, instead of pushing the wastewater out of the manhole, you push it out into property, people's showers, toilets, that sort of thing.
Effectively, I mean, Surrey Street is the unfortunate part of this, but that's the very reason why we have the two overflows to the Kaikara Stream. The stream is considered to be a less worse option than it coming out in toilets or into private property.
So, in terms of the bullet points that you see through, the discharge into the Kaikara Stream, is that only in the storm events or is that a perpetual thing?
All of this is in storm events. The frequency and magnitude of those events does vary. Kaikara Stream is...
About three, four times a year.
Yep. So, we are unfortunately not talking once in 10 years, all of these. The Cavisham Tunnel itself is roughly two or three times a year.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Calvert.
In view of what we've been saying earlier about how good it is to get rid of the silos within council, and understanding that your... That this tunnel falls under the responsibility of water and waste, we get to the end of this report saying the hazards associated with electricity and gas would need to be addressed before access, and that was the trust's responsibility to do any of that. I've got concerns that doing this without thinking that somebody should be looking at the overall thing that needs to be done to the tunnel before it turns into a wonderful walking and riding through place. And that probably, although the trust might be responsible for it, we should be looking at it in an overview sense. So, is that happening?
Yes, it is. The ELOU with the trust and based on the previous decisions by the council establishes the trust as the vehicle to engage with a variety of parties to deliver the trail from Wengatui through to Cavisham. The Cavisham Tunnel, and there's a couple of councillors here, councillor Wilson McTavish in particular, who have been involved in those discussions. The Cavisham Tunnel has water, wastewater, gas and electricity. They all need to be dealt with. And there've been discussions with each of those utility operators over time around solving those issues. There is a coordinated approach to it, but you still have to deal with individual utility operators. And there's been a variety of reports around hazard assessments for both the Wengatui and the Cavisham Tunnel. The Wengatui is less problematic, and the trust is making good progress on getting that one open. I recently had a discussion with Delta around the electricity cable through the Cavisham Tunnel, so they're aware of it. Those are ongoing discussions, really. So, there is an overall approach being taken to the entire trail. It's not... And this is really deals with one aspect that is under the control of, directly under the control of water and waste, which is why this report is here.
Yes, if I could clarify why I've put this up separately from the rest of it. So, in terms of making the tunnel generally open to the public, all of those hazards need to be addressed. But it is the presence of the unsealed manholes and the potential for overflow that is actually making us have to classify it as a restricted space. And what that effectively means is anybody who wants to go into the tunnel, be it a consultant, somebody who's working on behalf of the Tunnels Trails Trust, we have to go through quite an extensive exercise and have them accompanied and gas tested and all sorts of things before we can give them access. So, if we do this piece of work, then people who are working to open it up more widely would be able to do that much more freely than they can do at the moment. This would not be enough for us to take the gates off and just let people sort of start accessing it. But at the moment, this is a piece that constrains others who want to make progress on that work in terms of how easy it is for them to do that.
So, if I waved a magic wand and said, "You've got all the money in the world, just clear out everything out of that tunnel, make it properly accessible", you would start by doing this work?
The first thing we would have to do, yeah.
Separately from anything else?
The first thing we would have to do is...
So, you wouldn't be digging it up now and then digging it up again later? That would be the first bit of work you would do and I wouldn't need to coordinate with anything else?
No.
Councillor Hall?
I think so, Bishop. I'm just trying to get an idea of the degree to which the current issues that you've been talking about would be exacerbated by this and for how long those communities would have to cope with it. And I guess that question's, at what stage will the scheduled renewal works deal with it?
So, in terms of the model, and the model is an imperfect tool, so it works on a designed storm, so if it's not exactly that storm. We have run a scenario with a one-in-10-year storm. One-in-10-year storms do have a habit of turning up more often than once every 10 years. But, and it's a very precise type of storm, so it's not always that. That predicts around about 20 cubic metres additional into the two Kaikara overflow flows. So, that's diluted sewage, but it's volume. And about 190 cubic metres into the Surrey Street overflow. So, effectively, that's potentially 190 cube onto Surrey Street. And the other two locations. I have to say that the models are never perfect. They're pretty good at determining where things will happen, less good at determining exactly how much. Because I think it's fair to say, we don't believe that we have 190 cube sitting inside the tunnel each time this happens. But the one-in-10 is much bigger. It happens two or three times a year. So, it's happening in less than a one-in-10 event, if that makes sense. So, we're not talking about 190 cube two or three times a year on Surrey Street, but potentially we could have that much once in 10 years. In terms of timescales on current budgets, we think it will take 10 to 15 years to make a significant dent in all of those problems. Each bit of the... And the $7 million that we're doing next year will decrease it. But again, exactly how much? I have asked for a model to be run to actually give that estimate, but I don't have that at the moment. But you are talking minimum of five years before you really see any noticeable impact.
And when you were talking about water catchments earlier, you were talking about the expectation of more heavy rain?
Certainly peakier rain events, yes.
Which would suggest that this would happen more often?
Yeah, I mean, the models that we run, we have forward forecasts. So, we have various different modelling scenarios with current rainfall and with what we predict climate change will do. So, yes, that is true. In the longer-term climate change impacts, we are talking about these being more often.
Councillor Wilson?
Well, taking that point further, the longer-term models that you've got, are they within that 10 to 15 years that you talked about making a significant dent in them?
I think the next... Yeah, yeah. So, the next one is a 20-year?
20-year, 2030, 2030 and 2040 scenarios.
So...
So, these numbers are based on current rainfall?
And that you think that the work you've got doing with renewals meets those climate change predictions? So...
I don't think my answer was intended to be quite that precise.
No, no, appropriate. I'm not going to hold you to that.
Well, I guess what we're saying is, don't expect next year's $7 million package to make those overflow stop.
So, at the moment, we've got the manholes in the tunnel, and you've got the other ends. We're getting discharge already to Kaikara.
Yes.
How often, and I just want to... I'm sorry, I've lost the data in my head, but how often are you getting leakage in the tunnel?
Inside the tunnel is around two or three times a year. So, it is possible that the tunnel impacts... What I've actually asked to be modelled is to say, how much work would we have to do before the tunnel stops overflowing, which is a question we haven't asked before. It actually takes quite a few days to run that model, so I haven't got that answer for you at the moment.
Is it leaking at the same time as Kaikara Valley and Surrey Street or that's what I hope you're saying?
When the tunnel is overflowing, the Kaikara Valley will be overflowing. There'll be discharge into the Kaikara Stream. I don't believe it works the other way around. So, I think there will be times when the Kaikara Stream is overflowing, but the tunnel is not.
Yeah, okay.
So, that does mean that in the scheme of those renewals, the tunnel overflow is likely to stop sooner than us having nothing going into the Kaikara.
Okay, and just because it's been sort of mentioned by councillor Calvert, are you aware of when this became a water and waste services?
I'm aware broadly of the history, but dates, no.
Okay, so it was a trans... perhaps in Rix, as yet until it was transferred to you, I think in the 1990s? I don't know. Yeah, okay. Just a background, it was perhaps, it was given to the mere citizens and right cars of the city by the government. And was it at that stage being used as a walkway?
Councillor Thompson?
Some of these are ignorant questions, but the risk, the primary risk from sewage is that you get your feet dirty and possibly catch a disease. But so, but the gas issue, is that something that occurs almost spontaneously or is it a build-up over time that's measurable and you can know that it's happening?
It is something that would build up over a period of time. So, it's simply because it's in a confined area. If it was not, if it was in the open air, then the gas build-up wouldn't be an issue because it would be able to get away. But if you've either got that build-up happening within the sewer and leaking out through the manholes, or you've got stagnant sewage sitting there, and I think that's the other part of it, you're not talking about sewage that's moving once it's come out and formed a puddle. So, that's when you would get the build-up. So, if we're going to do an entry into there, then effectively we put gas meter in there beforehand, and if that bleeps, you don't go in and you do other things and ventilate. The other alternative would be that you put permanent gas monitors into the tunnel.
That was going to be my next question. If you accept that there might be occasional times in the year over the next few years, possibly next 10 years, where, I need the intrepid, and I wish to cycle through it, what is the cost involved in having a permanent gas monitor that screams, "Gas, gas, get out" or whatever?
I can't answer that question off the top of my head. I think even if we had them though, that might deal with people who are doing specialist work, so consultants and contractors. I think it would be extremely unwise to be relying on that in terms of the general public.
Wouldn't you have a situation whereby in the event that it started screaming, "Gas, gas, get out", I mean, it would presumably be doing that at a level that was not yet at a dangerous level, but resulted in staff, you know, there'd be a ring on the phone and we need to shut the gate?
I can't say we've actually thought through that particular scenario, but...
I can't remember the numbers, but the early work that was done for the trust around this, did it cost out some kind of gas monitoring system? And I think it's into tens of thousands of dollars by recollection, because you've also got to then have it wired back from an alarm system. You've got to have someone monitoring it. And one of the issues has always been allowing access for the trust and volunteers into the tunnel on a basis that we ensure that they are safe. What we have with the unsealed manholes is a situation where we can't guarantee that they'll be safe. And so, you've got to have, our view is, you've got to be trained, you've got to have procedures in place, and that imposes a difficulty on the trust in terms of getting access and for anyone else. It's always been an issue.
I get all that, and it's, if I was sitting in your seat, I'd be saying exactly the same thing. So, I understand where it's coming from. But what I'm trying to understand is, I'm trying to separate out two things. One is the occasional sewage overflow, in which case I would have thought you've got a pretty good idea when that's going to happen. And you accept that there's going to be some times of the year where somebody from Delta goes up and closes the gate and until we clean it out, it can't be used. That's kind of one issue. That's primarily an unpleasantness rather than a safety issue. But the gas one surely...
I'll get Laura a comment, but the gas is a, I'm not sure that we can predict necessarily when you might get a gas emission from an unsealed manhole irrespective of the weather conditions. In terms of, let me finish. There is a real concern, and there's clearly been a difference of view between the staff view about confined space and the risk of needing to manage that and other people's view. There is a risk that needs to be managed. And so, sealing the manholes is the way that removes the risk of that gas or sewage escape. And that's what you've got in front of you, a proposal to seal that, which removes that risk entirely.
What I'm attempting to separate out in my mind is the sewage overflow, because if we seal the manholes, we still have sewage overflow, we just have it in a different place. That's what you've told me. So, we, so pop that to one side. To me, sewage overflow in the Wengatui Tunnel is significantly better than sewage overflow in Surrey Street. I asked a question earlier around the gas and the safety as to whether that was a build-up or an instant. You can't protect against an instant unless you seal the manhole covers. You can presumably have a policy or a process in place where a gas buildup is detected and that results in the tunnel being closed. That's the part I'm trying to, I'm trying to delink that from the sewage overflow.
So, in terms of the gas build-up, from an engineering perspective, I would imagine that that is doable. I've no idea what that would cost. However, from a health and safety point of view, and particularly when you're dealing with potentially members of the public rather than consultants or other people who can be pre-briefed, I don't believe that that would get us over the bar in terms of discharging our responsibilities to keep people safe, if I'm honest.
So, are you saying that, I'm trying to understand whether my interpretation of gradual is different to staff's interpretation? I get it if gradual buildup is built up over 20 minutes or half an hour.
Yeah, when I'm talking gradual, I'm not talking days. Yep. Exactly how long, I don't know, but you're certainly not talking days for it to build up.
There's another ignorant question. What, in the Surrey Street kind of situation, you can't pump, tanker pump before it comes over the top of the manhole? The sewage way? The overflow?
Not practically in the volumes that you're potentially talking about. And we don't always know to that degree of precision when things are going to happen.
Just... Councillor Hall?
From Surrey Street through the tunnel, is it pumped or gravity?
Yeah, it's all gravity.
I'm assuming it must be, but yeah.
So, before, it must be downhill all the way. So, when you go out of the Cavisham Tunnel, you'll go down Kaikara Valley Road?
By the way, where's it coming from? Tom?
So, if you were moving back upstream from the Cavisham Valley Tunnel, it would be Kaikara Valley Road?
Yep.
But that's upstream, not downstream? I mean, from North East Valley through Kaikara, through the Cavasham Tunnel to Surrey Street?
So North East Valley just through there too?
Uh, sorry, not.
Sorry, the flows from North East Valley affect the hydraulic grade line at Surrey Street, which is essentially dictated by the MIS, the maintenance and septic sewers through the centre of the city. Backing up, and it lifts the level of the, level of the hydraulic grade line back at Surrey Street.
So it flows, it flows from Surrey Street through the Cavasham Tunnel to Kaikara Valley?
The reverse of that.
The reverse.
So, the problem at Surrey Street's a result of, it's a relatively steep catchment that comes out and flattens off at Surrey Street, so you get supercharged, for want of a better word, flows, it then suddenly hit a flat point and slowed down, and the pipe becomes fully charged full, and that's when you get surcharging and spill from the manholes, so any pumping at that point wouldn't be effective because your pipe's already full and flowing as fast as it possibly can. It's a matter of capacity rather than flow, if that makes sense.
So...
So?
Just wondering, how many manholes are we talking about in Surrey Street?
So, Surrey Street as a study, actually, it doesn't come out of the foul sewer, it goes over a weir into the stormwater sewer, and then comes out of the stormwater sewer in terms of how many manholes flood?
Maybe two or four.
Yeah, maybe up to six or eight.
Councillor Hall, back to you. Can you just move your mic round? So the area from Short Street, then Kaikara Valley, around the Burnside area, that goes to Green Island, sewage treatment plant?
I'm not quite sure where Short Street is, but yeah, the Burnside end of Kaikara Valley is diverted to Green Island, yep.
So, do we have problems with the overflowing in storm, in the, in the storm situation between Burnside and the Green Island effect of plan?
No.
So, what would stop us putting in an overflow system in Kaikara Valley?
There is already a diversion for some of that system from Kaikara Valley to Green Island, and we're looking at some enabling work to divert some more of that catchment, but we're always restricted by the, by the size of the network that goes to Green Island. So we can divert a little bit more, but it's not a great deal more, unless we upsize the pipes.
Yeah, so if you put an overflow system in there before the pressure flooded your manholes, put an overflow system between, on the Kaikara Valley side to the Green Island.
As I say, long-term, we have a whole series of different projects that contribute to sorting the problem out, it's just a question of how many of them you can progress, how quickly, so. I think we're, we're clear in terms of what we need to do, but no one of them is the silver bullet.
Yeah, because with the freezing when it's closing down, there must be still a very sizable catchment, flow in that pipeline to Green Island.
Yeah, so we are, we are utilising that, that capacity right at the moment. I think rough order costs, I can't recall now, I read the paper a couple of years ago, but the rough order cost for diverting a significant chunk of the flow was in the order of 10 to 15 million.
Yeah, I wasn't looking at doing a significant amount of it, all I was looking at doing is doing the overflow, and that would take the pressure off the manholes and the pump.
So we are doing as much as we can at the moment without capital, without capital improvements.
And I guess just to be clear, the reason that we haven't put forward the ideas in the 10 to 15s of millions for new capital is because you would still have to spend 10 to 15 million, you know, all the rest of the money on the renewals, the renewals still need to be done, and if the renewals are done, then the new capital isn't needed.
Councillor Wilson.
I think my question's been answered, but I'm, I'll, I'll answer, ask it anyway. Would we, if it wasn't for the Tunnel's Trail Trust, would we be looking or obliged to do anything in the Cavasham Tunnel at the moment?
No, the only reason we would be looking at doing this is to enable access into the tunnel.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Councillor Benson-Pope. Are you done? Councillor Kell.
The Surrey Street overflow mechanism, is it happening just, it would happen more if the tunnel manholes were closed, so it's happening at the moment? If it is, how much is it happening?
So yes, it certainly happens, I mean, it's, it's not constant, it's not constantly going over the weir, but in rain events.
It does go over the weir. Frequency of that one?
Maybe one or two years, or a couple of times a year?
Yeah, so it can depend on rainfall, but either, we've had, had years previously where we've gone a whole year without an overflow, and then we've also had years with three or four events. In terms of sealing the manholes, the frequency would likely increase marginally, but the severity each time it did happen would, would increase to the, to the volumes that Laura was quoting before.
So that, the volume though is for a larger event than the events it currently happens in, so it does all scale.
So, it's not much more would be happening there in the frequency sense, and the other one, although it isn't much every 10 years, it's a...
At the moment, yeah.
One chance in 10 of happening this year, in any year or whatever.
It, one chance in 10 that this year, it would put around about 190 cubic metre onto the road. I, I guess, I'm sort of assuming that people that do realise that when we're talking about it going onto the road in Surrey Street, that also ends up in people's houses. This is not just staying on the road in Surrey Street, it does actually flood properties. So I just do need to make sure that people understand that in this particular situation.
But it wouldn't, that wouldn't happen?
That wouldn't happen ever again? To that event?
Yes, no, that it wouldn't happen if we didn't do this to the tunnels? Or it might?
It wouldn't make it worse. It, it, yeah, we already have a risk and an actuality that properties in Surrey Street are flooded during heavier rainfall events, that does already happen.
So we're, we're facing that risk, but we're not actually changing, we're changing the likelihood by...
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe a little, but, but it isn't.
Yeah, so the, the model does predict two new areas that we don't know, that don't currently flood, but they are on-road and not that severe, and how accurate that is, is questionable, but the, the key issue is the Surrey Street and the two Kaikara, which is making it worse, not creating a new problem.
Does it cause, does the proposition that's here cause you, as a department, concern that we could choose to make it worse for people in the way we're proposing? I'm not asking you for a judgement.
I, I guess all I would say is we've laid out what, what the, what the options are, that's for council to decide.
Why?
Thank you. Just going through and having a look here, we talked about covering 27 covers. Is it that 40k each or 40k?
No, the 40k is total.
Okay. Then you look at, it should be noted that ones the manholes inside the tunnel areas are sealed to judge it would occur in a number of locations, the next last manholes. So, you're looking at how many roughly, do you have an idea?
So that, that was the bit where, without the, the insight from the model, I had taken an assumption that it would be a fairly localised impact, so that's, that's the implications I've just, just been...
Perfect, no, okay. Now, is there a issue with, currently an issue with ODA with the Cavasham residents?
No, it's, it's a very long tunnel.
Okay, that was going to be one of my next questions, yes. I noticed change, they're talking about 168 metres.
900 metres?
800, I think.
800.
Okay, so, and ODA comes out either end?
There's also, there's, there's gates on either end, and there's actually quite a, a long, longest lead distance in, before, so there's nobody sitting right next to the tunnel.
Okay. Can anybody give me an indication, what's the height of inside the tunnel? And where I'm going with this is, is there a potential, because I can understand what's happening in the overflow, is there a potential to putting a false floor in the tunnel, so you then have a secondary pipe that takes the overflow, and then you can put the other services, the gas and the power underneath?
The, the tunnel was a, built for a single track, so I don't know what the height is. The proposal that we considered for the floor for the tunnel ranged, it was a number of discussions. The last one that I recall was basically having a wooden floor platform built effectively outside and then brought in, so potentially would be space underneath. The practicalities of an overflow that you then pipe out would be quite difficult to imagine. Other, I think in terms of Wengatuie, they was talking about venting the, the pipes to the outside, but there's a vent for that. I'm not sure that engineerily it would be, be practical, but more work could be done, but that would be quite a bit of work, I suspect.
So, from the point of view of venting gases, if it was only gases we were talking about, then venting gases to the outside is doable. But in terms of the overflow, the reason it's overflowing is because the sewer pipe is absolutely full, so you're actually talking about diverting that amount of sewage to somewhere that isn't already full. To be honest, if we were able to do that simply, we'd have done that as part of the solution to the overall, the overall problem. So it's, it's as we do sometimes, fine, we've got flooding, you've got nowhere to take it to, and so I'm just not sure that there would be a practical way of, of doing that.
Okay, and is there any indication, or, because it's hard for you to answer this question, what the cost would be to Aurora and Warta Nova?
There was estimates, I can't recall what they were, but the idea is, certainly the approach to Aurora slash Delta, and Nova was looking to get them to contribute in kind or have some sponsorship that would actually see there, but that would be their issue. It is a potential constraint, because at the moment allowing the public in with those, and the cable is, I don't know how you describe it, action, that's something that would need to be worked through. The Cavasham Tunnel's always been a significant issue because of the utilities through there, not insurmountable, and certainly, as we've talked about, the overflows here are an issue around then, ensuring that people have safe access and remove that significant element of risk. So, there is a report, there was, but the report was done some time ago, and it was done on the sort of first principle, from an engineering sort of point of view, if the council was going to fund it and had unlimited funds, here's what the cost would be. That may not be a realistic number in terms of what it will actually cost to fix.
Okay, and finally, what is the diameter of the pipe?
There's two pipes, one is 525, so half a metre, and the other is 300, I believe.
Councillor Wilson.
Mr Avery, it's my understanding that Tunnel's Trust are concentrating on opening the Wengatuie Tunnel first, and there are substantial funds that have to be raised before they can actually, before that can be put into use. I'm just looking at the timing. Would it be advantageous for the trust to have this work done now? Because it's my understanding it's going to be some time before they actually require access to the Cavasham Tunnel. Is that correct?
I don't know the details, and I've only had a brief discussion with the trust more recently. The focus is on Wengatuie, Councillor Wilson might get an update, I understand there's a working view of something coming up. The focus shifted more towards Wengatuie and completing the track, the trail, both up to the Wengatuie Tunnel and then on this side of Wengatuie Tunnel, and there's been very productive negotiations with the landowner, as I understand it. The focus did shift on then, more Wengatuie because it's, it's easier, and doing the trail and then looking at the timing around Cavasham, so trying to get the rest of that built, but Councillor Wilson may know more than I do about that timing. But Cavasham's always been a constraint because of the utilities there, and so, since this paper, if the, if the manholes are sealed, that removes one element that is an impediment at Cavasham. So it needs to be done at some point, the problem needs to be solved at some point.
Councillor Wilson.
Well, I'm having, I just got some update, the trusts are looking at every opportunity to progress both tunnels in parallel if they could, but at the moment, the easiest option is, and the opportunities are at Wengatuie, they're being progressed, for those that want to know, there's an open day from 1 to 3.30 on Sunday, if anyone wants to go, go call in donation. Thanks to the landowners being very, very generous and allowing them access over the property so that the general public can see the site, that's just a wee plug. And there's a working day as well that day. They're looking at doing some drainage work, they're negotiating with the landowners involved at the moment. The University of Itagor School of Survey are offering some really good help with surveying work that will provide the easements, and it's great to have a student on board there, and there's a whole lot of other people offering assistance. There's also a, yeah, they're looking at options, so that's progressing really well, and the amount of people are really helpful as well in, in providing advice. The next part is the Kiwi Row connection to Kaikara Valley, there's a meeting earlier February with them to settle some of those issues, that takes you straight into Kaikara Valley, so, yeah, they're really keen to do both. The, yeah, but they haven't progressed the other issues with Aurora and Nova, they're waiting for some other things to happen there, but they're all on pipeline.
Yeah, I, I'm, can I ask a, I am aware that they're wanting to do both, and it's obvious, but when is it likely that they would want to get into the Cavasham Tunnel? Have you got a timeframe for that?
They've got enough volunteers, I understand that if they could get access, they would have some people working on some of the issues here. I mean, once you've got those covered in, even just getting a surface that people could safely access, I think could be done bloodfully quickly. Getting design work done for a ramp at the Kaikara Valley end has only been done through photos from outside at the moment, and plans supplied by council, so some of that work that could happen, and need to, and getting lighting specialists in, potentially, and other specialists in to look at those sort of things, it's, it's very awkward at the moment, as you're aware, the rig and roll that had to go on just to get them.
Councillor Stans.
Just a question around, there's, there's obviously a number of manhole covers through the tunnel. In the period there, the trail is being developed, in other words, not open generally, but making the tunnel environment safe so that the Tunnel Trails Trust could start to do some work and the other services could do their work. Would there be any advantage in sealing, choosing which manholes you seal? So clearly, the ones in the centre of the tunnel are going to cause the most problem in terms of sewage buildup and gas, but if you had the manhole covers at nearest to both ends, not sealed, and some form of trench, if you like, beside them to, to try and direct any leakage into a ponding area, local ponding area, to keep the tunnel at a, so, so you don't aggravate the spill as much in the Kaikara Stream or in Surrey Street, the spill is still occurring, but you're, you're trying to put the spill into an area that is a little bit more controllable in terms of minimising the risk inside the tunnel. Is that something that could be considered?
I would need to check which ones are the ones that overflow relative to the others. It's not something I've given consideration to, and I'd not be comfortable responding without taking some advice in terms of what the implications might be.
Is that something that, if we were not, like clearly we will make a final decision on, on whether to allocate funding for sealing as part of the plan? Is the time between us, between now and making that decision, to understand whether there's other mitigating? But for me, it's, it's not so much the cost of sealing the manhole covers, it's the impact of directing that overflow, more of that overflow into the Kaikara Stream or into Surrey Street. If there's a way of not restricting the overflow in the tunnel, but restricting where in the tunnel it overflows, it might be a better outcome during the construction period.
It's something we can certainly take advice on between now and when you're considering the final plan.
Thank you.
Councillor Thompson.
All we budding engineers sitting around the table. I, I just wonder whether it would be possible to delink this from the LTP. The sum of money that we're talking about, which is the reason it's here, is so small. I would have thought that it could be accommodated within the proposed additional cycleways budget that councillor Wilson flagged yesterday, which would enable it to be delinked from this process. The technical questions that are being asked and answered in back and forward could be dealt with outside of this process, and we could probably save ourselves a lot of time and angst. I think that we've got competing wishes here from those who want to expedite the process to those who have quite genuine concerns about the risks associated with that. I just don't think, I don't think we're going to sort it here, and I just don't know that it's a sensible way to proceed for $40,000.
Right. Councillor, can I just follow up on that? And Paul, I was going to suggest that I'm happy to move that staff report back on an engineering solution with costs that would allow the sealing of the Cavasham Tunnel sewer manholes without creating any negative effects on residential activity, and I agree totally, we should separate... And I agree totally, we should separate it out of this process because the timeline is, to me, doesn't seem to be necessary to line up with the annual plan or the LTP.
Would say I'm due.
But I take your, but I take your point, I take your point, but I would, my understanding is that the current report actually addresses some of the things that you've asked for, but more to the point, the current report says there are some things we can't address.
So just, if I can, just to be clear, there is no way to seal the manholes without those effects, without phenomenal amounts of money. There may be, and we can certainly explore it, a way to make parts of the tunnel accessible without sealing the manholes, or without sealing all of the manholes. They're slightly different things, but we cannot give access to all of the tunnel without sealing the manholes, we cannot seal the manholes without significant effects elsewhere.
My motivation for this was very much based on the comments from Laura about the modelling work which hadn't been completed and I sort of understood that there will be some further information that may help solve the problem.
But picking up what Laura's just said, my point, I think, was valid that there is, there are some things there's no point in asking for because it's already been addressed and we can't get there. And so what I would suggest is that the motion that will come out of this, maybe using some cooperation, should be worked on in the next 20 minutes or so while we're having morning tea. Unless there's some more questions, but I think we've exhausted questions and I think there's a constructive resolution in the waiting, but there's no point in trying to do it with all of us developing it, so let's break from morning tea.
Okay, we'll get underway again. Councilors Noon and Thompson, have you come to a consensus? Pam's got it. So, our councillors, the proposed resolution moved, who's moving it?
I'm happy to.
Shall it move? Counselor Noon, second to Counselor Thompson?
I can't read it, but.
Second, Counselor Wilson.
I think you agree to it.
Noon and Wilson is on the board?
Can I briefly speak to it?
So just one question clarification, the way that it's worded is, it's broader than just dealing with the wastewater sewer manhole. It talks about the council dealing with public access generally, is that the intent?
Well.
As opposed to the, this report was about the wastewater sealing of the manholes, remove that impediment to the work that the trust is doing.
What you're saying, the public having access to rather than providing to the public?
Can I suggest that given, sorry, given that what Mr Avery has just said, that the report referred to the imperative provided by the MOU of the trust, that we relate this just in the meantime to the trust getting in, because that's the, that's the issue? That's my suggestion, rather than the public.
Yes.
The sealing was never intended to facilitate immediate public access.
No, that's fine. And with regards to public access, and you just respond to Mr Avery, it was just around, I suppose, politically, we are, I suppose, trying to show that we have support for this project and so that's why I've sort of framed it that way, but more than happy that it just relates to the Tunnel's Trust.
So Pam, I think my suggestion is that you change the support of providing access for the, what is it, the Cavesham Tunnel?
The technical term is the Dunedin Tunnels Trails Trust, I think.
Dunedin Tunnels Trails Trust. Do the Cavesham Tunnel.
Your worship, just while that's happening, just a matter of clarification in relation to the two together, it seems to me that they are somewhat contradictory because if the matter is to be dealt with at an operational level outside of this process, then I would assume that it wouldn't come back to us. But then there is a request for a report back to the Infrastructure Services Committee. So which of the above is anticipated or am I misunderstanding the intent?
Well, your worship, through the, through you, the intent is, following up on what Counselor Thompson had said, that it should be dealt with outside this process, it's a relatively modest amount of money that's been talked about and we don't know what the solution is going to be when the report comes back. It may mean that it ends up going back into a annual plan process, but we just felt that it was better to be reported back through the standing committee process because then at least we are progressing it.
Andrew, if we just took the at an operational level out and just see how this matter will be dealt with, fine.
Right. What I'm going to do is, when we've resolved, maybe allow some questions now and that will, that will finalise the resolution and then I'll open it up for discussion. So I'll allow questions now, or encourage questions now as much as anything, in order to get the resolution in a shape which appears to be to have most support and also addresses the issues. So do you wish to change it to that this matter be dealt with outside the long-term plan process and just leave the words operational out?
Yes.
That's fine. So Pam, that's the first one, is that this matter be dealt with outside the long-term plan process, just take out. At an operational level, just take out those words. Now, is that, the mover and second are comfortable with what's being now? Any further questions from Counselor Wilson?
Just a question for the mover and second, given the comment, the quite unequivocal comment that staff made at the beginning of the discussion about the consequences of the sealing, if that were to happen, I think it would be helpful if, I don't detect much appetite for making the situation in Surrey Street worse than it currently is around the table. With appetite's all right, with or not, I'm not sure. But I think it would be useful if the mover and second would consider it, to have a qualification in there and referencing no further deterioration or no exacerbation of the current issues in terms of surcharging at Surrey Street.
Well, no, significantly. Because my understanding from the staff is that the increase is likely to be marginal.
I wonder.
No, that's not what we're.
Well, that's not, with respect, that's not what we're seeing. I misunderstood.
190 cubic meters ain't too marginal from.
Marginal daily, but not marginal.
Marginal on top of what already happens. We're already.
I wonder, is a possible suggestion that, and asked that, for the report in due course, including the impact on other catchments, so that the report identifies implications or impacts on other catchments. Because there will be some kind of impact and it's a question of what is, and there may be a variety of options, it might have differing levels of impact. So if we include that, that does cover the, hopefully, the explicit component.
Are the mover and second are happy with that? Any further questions? Counselor Wilson.
A question for Tony. This project's two parts and it's not just wastewater, it's also transport. And would it be helpful to reiterate or to confirm in this motion that this is seen as part of the strategic cycle network? Because that may be one of the funding sources and at the moment, I'm very aware that there is some.
Well, my own view is that it's not something that we've debated as part of this item, it is covered in the earlier reports.
For the messaging for NZTA urban cycling, would it be helpful if we had that discussion as part of this?
Well, this item isn't about that, oh, your call.
Could we not discuss that as part of the review?
Okay.
When it's reported back?
Yeah, and that's fine.
But Counselor Wilson, is one of the points you're making, this actually is an issue that crosses over between a number of different.
That's exactly my point, and if we had.
Transportation.
That the funding may be, as raised by Counselor Thompson, that the funding for this may be part of that project. And if this is seen also as an urban cycleway project, which I think it is, and walkway, then how the funding comes out is imperative as well.
Yeah, the, it is, there are a number of different parts involved, there's water waste, transportation parks and Greek services as well as property, in fact. I don't know that a resolution here identifying that it is part of the strategic cycleway actually helps in terms of this current item, that is already there, it's already covered in the strategic cycle network, it's already part of the potential to attempt to get access to the extra funds from NZTA. My own view is that it's there and this will just complicate what is about a report from water and waste, about one aspect of dealing with the Cavesham Tunnel and the impacts of that.
Thank you.
Okay, so no further questions, I'll invite the mover to speak to him.
My only comments would be around, the report that we received effectively gave us no choice, other than essentially we would be saying no to adding the 40,000, simply because of the negative effects of the Surrey Street catchment and any other negative effects that would be created by sealing those manholes in the Cavesham Tunnel. So really, this, what this is asking is, is for staff to continue to look for solutions. It reconfirms council's strong position that they would like to see this asset, historic asset, be available for public access at some point in the future. And the first step is allowing the Dunedin Tunnels Trails Trust to create a facility for that public access to eventually continue, or to start again after many years of non-use. So, and the other point that Counselor Wilson raised was around that, that this particular tunnel is a key strategic connection for the cycleway network and I think that shouldn't be lost sight of because my recollection is that I think it sat about number four on the list. So it's important to the city in the long term to achieve that connectivity for cyclists and pedestrians.
Speaker.
Would you like to exercise your own.
Nice, thank you.
Well, I will just make the comment that I think the MOU that the council signed with the Tunnel and Trails Trust obligates us to facilitate access to the tunnel in good faith. Because if there were to be insurmountable blocks to doing that, then we shouldn't have signed the MOU in the first place. So I think that, picking up on Counselor Noon's comments, that this is, A, seen as a very important part of our strategic cycle network and B, that we've acknowledged that by entering into an MOU with the trust, we need to keep it moving. And there will be issues along the way and it's a matter of how we, it's a matter of surmounting those and getting on with it. So I support this as well. I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carry. Thank you. Now, we're on to Stormwater, 12.27 in the bigger folder.
Counselor Thompson, is there something? Counselor Calvert.
Is it, is it possible to have, is this a discussion about rubbish bags and things? Ah, we have.
Solid waste.
Quite a different thing.
Anything on, Counselor McElroy?
The big question is really the ORC consent stuff and 6B and there's so much uncertainty around there, I'm not sure that we can really have a decent conversation about these budgets right now without knowing the outcome of those discussions. Do we have a good understanding of their timeframes in terms of 6B and their aspirations about when they will come to some conclusions around there?
So maybe I can just first address the stormwater consents, those have been granted and our monitoring against them is showing that we're looking okay. In terms of 6B, we do tend to get some slightly differing messages as to when it's going to happen, whether it's going to happen. So no, we don't have any certainty as to when it's expected to do anything or what that will actually mean for us.
Would it be helpful for a governance-to-governance conversation about this, so we do have some narrative?
Don't go, sorry. I'm happy to have it.
Good, very good.
All right, reminder.
Further questions on that? Right, we'll move on to solid waste, Counselor Calvert.
I'm wondering.
New person out.
I'm wondering whether we should flag out in our consultation process that we actually run rubbish at a profit, or to put it another way, we more than, we get more than 100% return on it, however we want to put this. The reason being that I think rate payers think that what we're doing is a user pays system and if you're getting more money in than what you're paying out, it isn't user pays. And maybe people should be able to understand that and make a comment on it from a long term, from a planning point of view.
There certainly has been quite a bit of media coverage in the last couple of years about the fact that the solid waste budget returns a dividend to general rates. I'm not sure quite how explicit that is in an accessible form to the general public for consultation, if that would be a genuine question, I guess.
But it sort of turns up as a 100%, because it can't go above 100% presumably, and that gives a false impression that we're covering our costs. Could we have it somewhere just flagged in the middle of the consultation?
Just for clarity, can I follow up on that and ask, I know that the Green Island Waste Disposal, which is what I think you're referring to, shows a surplus, but if you take the solid waste disposal and over the whole city, including in the outlined ones, is it hit surplus?
So the solid waste budget as a whole returns a dividend to the general rates? I think I'm seeing some slightly confused, this was with relation to your question, not about the solid waste section, but about an earlier section in the plan that shows the percentage of funding, section five, was it?
That's it.
Yeah, that's the section you're referring to, I think.
With the 100%. Yes. Just partly, we're making two decisions here that we don't, we're not sort of flagging out to rate payers particularly. One of the decisions we're making is to return a dividend for something that is essentially a sort of a user pays sort of service. And the other decision we're making, that we're not making on purpose at the moment, is that the non-Green Island landfills are running, as we're at a loss compared with the Green Island ones, as a result of our decision to charge the same amount throughout our city. And that might be what we want to do and that's always what we have been doing, but we haven't been actively making that decision and it's not clear that that's a decision we've been making. And it may be that people want to have a say on whether they think the charges should be uniform even if the costs are different or.
So what you're saying, Hillary, is page 612, you would like to see the landfills funding sources column amended to reflect the fact that it is more than 100%.
Can I just, I can't, I don't know what page 612 says, but if that's the, generally that shows that there's 0% rates goes into the landfill, not that you make a surplus out of the landfills. So generally, it's those sort of things show whether the percentage of rates contribution that goes into a fund, there is no rates that goes into landfill activity. It's always been well known, as far as I'm aware, that the council makes a surplus from the landfills. The pricing of the landfill at the gate's also part of the council's waste minimisation strategy, which dovetails into the recycling initiatives and all those other activities. As far as I'm aware, that's been generally known, it may not have been, but.
Sorry, I'm one who didn't know and I, you know, up until I became involved in council here, so possibly there's a couple of others too. I probably haven't been watching the papers properly. I probably haven't been watching the papers properly, but having those two things, can we have those two things out there so people can understand them in the long-term plan? One, we're doing a cross subsidisation because we've chosen to make the charges the same throughout the city for landfills. And secondly, that we're actually getting a dividend from something that might otherwise on the face of it look like just a user pays. And I'm not saying it's got to bad reasons for doing that, I'm just saying that maybe people have a...
Can I ask, where does the surplus appear in our accounts now?
Page, well, check the financial, Laurie or whoever, but 1236 shows a solid waste activity which shows a surplus for each of the years. I'm assuming that that's the line where it appears, but Laurie?
Yeah, page 1236 is the operating statement for this activity. So the net surplus is showing, you'll see 1.42 million for 15, 16 budgeted. And then on the next page, you'll see there's the cash flow impacts, which includes the dividend being returned of 1.148 for next year.
So that's going to the general rate?
Correct.
I'm just trying to clarify what it is you're asking. You want to see it expressed in the other line, not the, you want to see it expressed?
I want to see those two things expressed in a way that allows people to understand that those two things are happening. And for example, if a community board approaches us and says, we're not getting the money we think we might from you, or we're not contributing enough, or whatever, it would be useful if we could say, for example, we are cross subsidising your landfill because we think it's the right thing to do, or whatever. We've got it out there on the radar in a way that we, it isn't sort of, it doesn't leap out.
Look, I'm confident we can write something to go somewhere in the document, and Jane will be responsible for finding out where. The bit that I'm not certain about is with a landfill, there's quite a long aftercare period, which costs quite a lot of money. And what I don't know is if we've ever sat down and modelled the entire lifetime cost of the landfill. So whilst this year, we can say the amount that we get from the users is more than the cost of the landfill, I'm not sure that we've got the data to be able to say...
So just for clarity, that has all been modelled, and each year we put some aside into that pot for carrying for the landfills afterwards?
In that case...
So this is genuine surplus back to the roads?
We can. Jane, do you know where you would put that in the document?
I can put that in the supporting documentation in the group of activity section. It would be very difficult to fit it into the consultation document unless we were consulting on that issue.
Right, okay.
Councillor Hawke?
I just had a quick question, what the exact matching revenue and expenditure in the 23 to 25 years for the restore, recover store is?
So which page do you want here?
Oh, sorry, 1236.
That's for when the landfill technically closes, so we then have to, we'd be looking at running a transfer station. So just for clarity, we've created a new line of a transfer station, and also the recovery store, we've separated it out as well, because that could become an independent operating unit.
Just to be clear, in those years, because there is so much uncertainty as to what will happen once we reach that time, we've had to almost arbitrarily pick a view on what we're going to put in for the financials, and that is based on that landfill simply closing and the transfer station and recovery store staying operational?
Councillor P.
You're also on 1236 under revenue, the line on recycling, we're going to either experience a big drop in the revenue from recycling, or that this past year or the current year is favorable.
Yeah, that's to reflect that in the model that we had originally three years ago when we started on our new system, there was going to be a rebate or a refund from the, or surplus from the sale of recyclable materials. That hasn't been ventuating from the commingled yellow bin material, only glass we've been getting a revenue stream back from, like a rebate. So the markets haven't recovered, the high dollar and all those things. So we've just taken that risk factor out of the equation so that we're covering the full cost of the contracts.
So the budget in 14, 15 and the previous years, we simply haven't been actually getting?
So 15,000 a year, is that a, that's in the budget, it's an estimated figure, and we're way below that this year?
Councillor Hawke?
The gas recovery from the landfill, is it being used or just burnt off?
That's been utilised over at the wastewater treatment plant with the generator set, and that's offsetting the electricity costs for the Green Island Wastewater Treatment Plant. So it doesn't appear in this budget, it appears in the wastewater budget under the electricity, reduced electricity costs.
What is the actual value of that to the wastewater?
I think it's about $350,000 a year. Because it also recovers gas out of the digesters as well, so the two gas streams are combined.
But there shouldn't be some kind of value back to the landfill?
I think, I don't know how the financials deal with it, but there's a benefit to the wastewater, there's also we reduce our ETS obligations because we are collecting the gas from the landfill, we're mixing it with the gas from the digesters and using it. It's accounted for between the two budgets, I'm not entirely sure how it flows, but it is fully accounted for.
So just for clarity, all of the revenues for the three waters, and that includes the gas revenue, is actually shown in the management overhead line now? So the wastewater budgets show their full cost, the revenue comes in at the high level. But yeah, it's the offset to the ETS that is the benefit to Solid Waste rather than any actual revenue going back?
Yeah, I just thought it should have showed in the landfill as an income.
Any more questions? Councillor Wilson?
I think last year, and not this year, the Strathair Community Board suggested a charge, albeit smaller than the current charges, for solid waste services that may be provided in the communities. And whether there's any work being done on that, and that's where sometimes people would use a facility more if they're paying for it than they don't, then if they don't pay for it. So at the moment, there's a good opportunity of changing people's behaviour with the recycling, in the Strathair especially, or possibly in Riverwood Coast as well. And if they were charged, but charging for the service, they need to be consulted on it, and whether there's any move to do that.
So in this process, that's not something we're currently suggesting. It will be a similar issue to the one that we will have to address from the second year if the central city recycling proposal goes through. So our intention was to look in advance of next year's process about how we appropriately charge for anywhere where people are using drop-off facilities rather than curbside collection. But in terms of the current round, that option hasn't been advanced yet.
It could be if we made a motion today, if there's a willingness to do that. Have you got the time and the resources to consider that? Should we decide to, we want to do that?
I suspect it's probably not huge amounts of work to come up with a very simplistic approach that simply says this is what it costs. But when you're getting into the more complicated arguments about who exactly benefits, to do it in this sort of timeframe that you'd be looking at, you're simply talking about drawing a line around an area and saying you get benefits, which would then potentially open up arguments as to who lives on main roads and who actually can use it and who can't use it. So I guess our preference would be to do it a bit more thoroughly, bearing in mind that the central city work and some of the other outlying areas, rather than trying to do it for one particular area sooner.
Right, any questions on that one? So we'll move on to the report, the future of council recycling services in the central activity area, this is in your big folder, 18.5.1. Right, councillors, questions on this particular report, please. Councillor Hawke?
I think you worship, just a question as to whether or not in the scope of items that could be recycled, polystyrene have been considered, and whether there are recycling facilities that can process that. And given, in fact, I mean, given the nature of the central activity area, I imagine there is a lot of it.
Yeah, I am aware that there are commercial operators that provide a service for collecting polystyrene. I have asked a lot of questions about where the polystyrene goes and how it's recycled, given that recycling markets aren't at their best, and I haven't had a satisfactory answer. So it's a chain of custody issue for me, I'd like to know where it goes. It's also a very bulky material, so transporting it, you're transporting 95% air, so it's hard to make an economically viable product to recycle. So we encourage, you know, as much as possible, product stewardship and listening polystyrene packaging.
But were, I mean, were it to become feasible or available, there's nothing in this plan that would stop that from being taken up?
I think there's one commercial operator who does take polystyrene. Our systems aren't set up to cope with that, so we wouldn't, and that's predominantly the white expanded polystyrene. But there is polystyrene, which is the plastic six, is used for some packaging, meat trays and things like that, that is accepted in our collection system. So that information would go out with the communications plan for when these facilities are opened, for the various areas?
Could that information also include putting them in touch with a commercial operator for polystyrene recycling services, were that available?
We can indicate where other people do take it, certainly on our website and things like that.
Councillor Thompson?
It's indicated in the report that the informal arrangement that's been in place for seven years has been stopped. Well, there's two slightly different explanations provided. One is that it's on the basis of health and safety concerns, and the other is that it's on the basis that it's uneconomic. So I'm just wondering, what has changed with regard to the health and safety concerns that this operator has done this for seven years but doesn't wish to do it now? Is there any substantive change?
I think it's the busyness of the city has increased over that time, and the council just stepped in as an interim because it was right before Christmas, and a lot of shops, as we discovered through our survey, have become reliant on the collection at curbside for the cardboard. So in keeping that system flowing and keeping the streets tidy over the Christmas New Year period, we've been able to incorporate it into our budget to cover it for the remainder of this financial year, following this project here where we are looking for getting back of house collection sites set up, that will improve the service.
If I can just add something as well in terms of health and safety, the new Health and Safety and Employment Act that's coming in later in the year, I think has probably raised the profile. Whether or not it actually makes any fundamental difference to what the operator would have been required to do, I don't know, but it's certainly made people far more aware of their responsibilities. So that may have had something to do with it.
Was there any contractual relationship that existed between us?
No.
Has the operator at any stage sought to have a contractual relationship with us?
The operator has actually changed, so the operator sort of really kind of adopted the service from a previous operator. And from what I understand, the previous operator worked quite closely with the businesses. The operator that kind of then adopted the service was more concerned about how difficult the collection was and the health and safety. He brought that to our attention.
Thank you. Councillor Cowan?
Was that at all, as far as you're aware, as a result of increased complaints? I mean, we would track out the complaints made to us about that.
We're not getting any complaints about it, it's a service that is really valued by...
Actually, yes you were, because I made one. Not only I did, but three other people did for the same lot of cardboard one day, so I know that you are getting some.
Yeah, three, Mr Mayor. The existing cardboard collection contractor wasn't contracted to us, opted out of the business before Christmas, we stepped in to take, deal with that through until June. What you have in front of you though is a proposal to try and deal with recycling in the CBD area, that was asked for, there's been a survey that was done, you had before your proposal to try and sort some of these issues out and have some system in place that might deal with some of the issues that we've experienced.
Councillor MacTach?
In relation to funding, I know the recommendations are that the pilot and the two second ones are funded through the general rate. Do we need to actively move to put budget, funding in the budget for those two items? If that's the case, the commingled is 45, I think the recycling drop-off point, or it's the other way around, the commercial recycling drop-off points is 45, but I'm not sure that we have a figure for the residential recycling. No, it's not by way of the targeted rate.
Yeah, the residential is just going on to the current targeted rate, curbside rate, so that's that small area southeast of Prince's Street.
So that's the curbside collection service?
Correct.
Is that also the two residential recycling drop-off points?
No, they are separate to that. And those numbers haven't been included into the budgets at the moment, because this was to go out for consultation through the LTP before being included.
On the list of the unfunded items, I'm just looking at Laurie, there was a list of numbers of unfunded items?
The unfunded items list that we've got is the option two.
Yeah, option two.
And the, what, three, 45,000. 45,000 on option 1.3, and 45,600 on cost under option 1.2.
So that deals with the commercial recycling drop-off points?
Yeah.
The two residential recycling drop-off points, we currently don't have a figure for?
Yeah, there's 30,000 for the setup. That's 45, that's the 45.
Okay, and, okay, so in that case, do we need to include those in our motions?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have understood that you had a copy of a list of unfunded items, you didn't notice again?
I, maybe I've missed it, but I don't think we do.
Right, just to make sure we're absolutely clear, so the curbside collection would be
done by the, the normal curbside collection rate, just to a normal extension, yeah? The neighbourhood recycling, so residential drop-off, is a thirty thousand one-off cost, and then fifteen thousand six hundred per year servicing, and the commercial setup is forty-five thousand. Now, what we're proposing is that those are general rates in the first year, partly because the nature of the rollout means identifying who's benefiting is extremely difficult when it's not fully there, and then we would be expecting to bring back a different funding proposal for future years with a view to some form of targeted rate, but there will be some work to do to, to work through exactly who's benefiting from what.
Sure, okay. I'm happy to draft or redraft the motions to include those budget items.
Okay, so you're indicating you're going to move something.
Well, I'm happy to move the resolutions that I think they need.
You need some...
The figures need to be in there.
You need some time for that, so while you're doing that, are there any other questions? And is there a second, well, second councillor Hawkins? And are there any other questions with regard to the report? Councillor Cowan.
As regards a proposal about the targeted rate, has any thought been given to producing that result differently in that a rate, if there's a lease on a property, then the rates may be part of a general lease payment or a separate payment, and putting targeted rate up may fall differently as to whether it's a property owner or the person who's occupying it.
I think that part of the reason, it's been quite challenging on staff to get from a point of view of consulting to a, a, a physical, what are we going to do? We do recognise that how we're going to charge for it in the long term has got a whole number of different complexities, and that's why we have tried to keep it simple, and, but there is clearly a desire to have something operational in the short term. I don't think we can quickly come up with an appropriate charging mechanism.
In terms of the curbside, the residential curbside collection service, every resident who receives that pays the charge of sixty-four, sixty, sixty-four dollars, that includes all the flats through North Dunedin everywhere else, it's a mechanism that we use to charge for that, and that's the proposal, that it's an extension of that existing service using the existing funding mechanism.
Any questions? Well, we'll just take a couple of minutes while the... It's fine. Get it right.
You're so much pressure. Can you move on to something else?
Thirty-five for one, I guess.
Thirty-seven for one, actually. Thirty-seven for one.
Not that we're not concentrating on the lighting.
Don't you standing orders using the laptop for us as well?
Something about the app.
Do you speak, Charlie?
I think it's anybody else who watches, thirty yours. I don't think so, I think it's just, was it?
I'm four eleven. I think it's seven.
I think I've got it wrong. Yeah, the, the second one has to be an operational cost of forty-five K for one year only. Sorry?
All right, approves. Now, I'm constantly reminded.
There's probably heaps of tie-frames.
Okay, councillors, it's on the, on the wall.
Is that, is that okay? So.
I think the second one on the commercial recycling is not a one-off operational cost.
So it needs to be, it needs to read an operational cost of forty-five K for one year only?
Yes.
That's the general rate component?
Yes.
And then hopefully it will transition.
So it's just an operational cost?
Yep.
You'd have to remove one of, but then you have to add for one year only.
Right. So you've settled on that, can, can I, councillor McTavish, would you like to speak to your remarks?
Not only that, I, I actually, when we received this report, I had to contact Catherine say, but we've already received this report, and, and we, we had received a version of it in, in November, so I think I expressed my enthusiasm for this then and don't really feel the need to again, only to say I think it would be a shame for us not to fund it, given the enthusiasm that we all had at the time for this service.
Okay, speakers. Well, I can only endorse those remarks, and on, put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you. Now, that brings us to the end of order of waste services, I think. So I will move from, move from the chair, recommendations one to six, on page six, second to councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Very good. Moving along. We are now on to section fourteen, which is community development and support, I believe. So I invite those staff who are involved with this to come up. Right, councillors, let's start with, well, section fourteen, community development and support, let's start with community development and support in that case, page fourteen point one, any questions on that, and then just let's move down through the various areas, so questions. First, we'll tell you a couple of pages, we want to move on to crematory cemeteries and crematorium. Councillor McTavish.
I've got a question here, and it's just in relation to the request team that went out, or request for proposals that went out. I can't remember the timeframes around that, but is it likely that that would impact on the fifteen sixteen year, or once, I assume there'll be an assessment process in the timeframe around that, is it likely that we will have implications for the fifteen sixteen year as a result of that?
Okay, the chair, no, we're not anticipating that, the expressions of interest close in March, and we're, based on the nature of the process and the, I guess the fact that we, we simply don't know what we're going to get and how that's going to be evaluated and discussions will go, if, if they proceed through to any change in operational circumstances, that this budget is, is based on the premise that the current situation in this financial year continues next year.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Thompson.
This is just for information, and I have raised it with Mr. Mackenzie, but it may, might be relevant to our deliberations subsequently, and on page fourteen point five. Fourteen point four and fourteen point five, my, my reading of, of this is that our cemeteries and crematorium activity from sixteen seventeen onwards is essentially funded fully from general rates, there's a small deficit in the very last hour years, but it's essentially funded from general rates, but we have in the cash flow a transfer of cash from sixteen seventeen onwards of almost two hundred thousand dollars each year going out to a reserve fund, and I have questioned with staff why we would need to do that, and whether that is in fact two hundred thousand a year that is not necessary in, in this account, and and I'm also aware that that's a fund that's been building up for some considerable time, so I'm, I'm really, I'm not necessarily asking, but the finance staff to have a look at that and see whether, A, that transfer to reserves is in fact required, and B, whether having a couple of million dollars in a chocolate box is the best way to manage our, our ongoing operations.
So I take it that's rhetorically...
It's a rhetorical question.
Raised with Mr. Mackenzie, and he is, he's fusing through the chocolate boxes as we speak. Councillor Cowan.
With this being a bumper rabbit season, has any, has any thought been given to lifting the ban on dogs in cemeteries, at least to reduce the chances of the rabbits playing havoc as that we saw on TV in Vicargo recently, it being a low, low-impact response, not involving nasty chemicals or anything?
I guess the short answer is no. The, the long answer is if there were any consideration to remove the ban on dogs in cemeteries in the future, which have been, the question has been asked through the annual plan process and in, in reserves management hearings in the past, if it were to come up again, I think the, the use of dogs running free to control rabbits would be even more problematic than having them on leads, but there hasn't been any conscious thought to that at the moment, but I do take the point about the rabbit population, and it is a concern across all the reserves, and cemeteries because of dogs, I think we do have more conventional methods of controlling it. Been that effective at the moment, but there are...
Any further questions? Okay, we'll move on to the formed and then targeted rate, top page fourteen point eleven. Councillor Wilson.
Just a quick question, in the year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, eighty thousand dollars for the off-again Christmas tree?
The, the Christmas tree's externally funded, so it's only purchased if we fundraise through grants to the likes of the Community Trust and other, other such grant givers.
Councillor Thompson.
If that's the case, why would it sit in the as an expenditure item without a corresponding revenue item?
Okay, we'll, we'll move on to the report, the allocation of grants funding for two thousand and fifteen sixteen May, that is on page eighty point seven point one, and I think we'll... Mr. Coffey, since I believe you're the author, are questions on this, councillors?
Just a piece of context on all of community development first, as we go across here, and how this has been treated in the first year and ongoing, and all budgets, are they all treated the same as no increases right through all, all budgets, so there's no rates rise? How does that sit with a non, no reduction in service level? And that's slightly financial, is how can you put less in each, sorry, the same amount in each year and not account for CPI or LGCI or whatever it is, and not have a reduction in service level?
Exactly.
Okay, by efficiencies. Okay.
In the recommendations, it asks for an allocation of a new sum for the two fifteen sixteen budget, and I just can't see anywhere in the report that gives us a steer on what that sum should be or could be. Can the staff give us some sort of a steer as to what their expectations of that, that amount would be, because it's sort of like, it's a sort of nebulous question, you don't really know what new grants may be required. I mean, if I suggested a million dollars, is that, or, or, or a hundred dollars, you know, I mean, where, where does it fit, that request?
That was a difficult question for staff to answer, but we did look back over the past five annual plan rounds, and you'll see on page eighteen point seven point two, there's a, in the background, we've said that in the past, you've given, traditionally councillors have given about thirty to sixty thousand in new grants through the annual plan process, and that's, that was just given to you as historic information, we're not suggesting that that's what you might wish to do going forward. Another question that was raised was, in the past, some of the grants have been inflation-adjusted, but they haven't been for some time, and we were asked what the figure would be if we were to inflation adjust the lot, well, inflation sits at one percent, so it's one percent of the figures presented, which is four thousand five hundred for the first group and one thousand seven hundred for the second, the third, the million, one point seven million isn't, it's, it's, you're about property and so it's...
Yes, I don't see that being quite so relevant, but it's the other one.
So inflation is at least around five, but the other was a guide of what you've done in the past.
Thank you.
Councillor Cowan.
I like the idea of sort of shifting the community grants out of annual plan and things, and sorting them out in a way that we're heading for, and thank you for all the work that we've done to get there. I am concerned, however, about the effect of ratcheting in increases on the, on the idea that there might be new grants that we might want to do. It seems to me that doing that, if we have a year where we really haven't gotten any money, and we've got all these areas where we've just said, on the off-chance somebody might want a new one, or probably they do want a new one, we ratchet them in, thus it is that, and I know this isn't your proposal, you've been asked about it, but it seems to me that the, what we might be doing here is taking away the ability to choose between a community grant and something else, so that we just could increase it by, as councillor Wazeyt says, something between a hundred dollars and a million dollars each year, so it just allows a proposal for a new project to be taken out of our hands, and it always keeps increasing, it ratchets in an increase in this area that takes away our ability to juggle where this might be more or less important than something else we're doing.
Councillor McTavish, you're indicating that you might have the answer to that?
Well, I'm just wondering, as chair of the Grants Committee, I, I wonder whether it would give councillor Cowan any comfort to know that... it would give councillor Calvert any comfort to know that there are occasions when we do not fully fund everything that we're asked and that we actually leave money in the pot because we don't think that it would be in the best interest of the taxpayer to fund the things that have applied. So, um, it's not the case that just because the money is there, we will spend it. What putting an additional thirty or sixty thousand dollars in the pot, um, would enable is us to make, um, decisions, should we wish to increase the, the, the number of things that we are doing through grants. It's not, it's not necessarily a given that we would do that, it's simply an enabler of that. Whereas if we put in sixty-two thousand eight hundred less in the fourteen, fifteen year, which is what is suggested, then we will either have to reduce existing grants in order to give funding to somebody else or, um, cut an existing grant in order to give grant funding to something else. So that, that's the implication.
Through, and can I just, that's quite correct. In the past two years, the major event, major and premier events fund has not been fully expended because of just that. Also through the grants review, we, staff identified that this will need to be a process that happens once per triennium. And so we're suggesting that, that the first, that during an LTP meeting, that the level of grants funding is set, um, each, each triennium. And so it won't, it won't be an annual occurrence, it will be once in the three-year cycle and you'll set the level of funding and then readdress that in the next LTP year.
So does that mean that it's set for the in-between years? Because if it's, for instance, if we increased funding by sixty thousand a year for new projects, forget about the inflation, which is a separate issue, then in year two, that's a, an hundred and twenty thousand that we've, you know, that we've actually committed at the beginning of that triennium, um, and that could be sixty thousand or whatever that we can't spend on the tunnel because we've already said that the Grants Committee can choose what to do that with. And I'm, I'm just, the increase troubles me in a way that.
It's difficult because it's at the beginning, this is the first time we've ever done this. And so we're not quite sure how it's going to, um, to work once, once we've had a major, major grants round, um, and we see what sort of response we get from the community. It could well be that we're overwhelmed and we need to come back next year for council to, to have the discussion again, or it could be that we're underwhelmed and we need to give money back. So, so it's, it's a really tricky question to answer, but it's, it's a, it's a conversation that we believe needs to take place, um, on a, on some sort of a cycle.
Is the in-between thing that there is the ability to carry forward, um, spent from this year to next year or is that not?
We have not been able to do that previously.
So that would be a different way of achieving if we didn't use it for this year, that, that if there was a new project which was pressing, that the Grants Committee thought was important enough that we may allow a carry forward, which would sort of to some extent address that?
That would take a change in policy of council. To date, uh, requests to, um, carry forward that budget have been declined. So it would need to be, that is possible, but for that to be possible, we would need to change our view on that as a, as an approach.
But a policy of adding fifty thousand a year would also be a change of policy?
Not, not really, because what happens every year is, um, people come to us. So for example, last year, the youth orchestra came to us, um, Brockville came to us, I forget who the other ones were. Ignite Consulting came to us, um, and council decided, and, and all requested grants. And council sat around this table and said, okay, we'll give you grants. They won't any longer come to this table, they will go to grants. And if we put in the budget, what we've got here, which is sixty-two thousand dollars eight hundred less than what we, than the total that we put in last year, this time last year, um, that means that we won't be able to respond in any way to any of those types of organisations. So, yes, you're right in the sense that this is a new structure, but, um, historically council has, at the conclusion of the LTP process, um, added in between thirty and sixty thousand dollars per annum of grants, additional grants.
So just so that we're all on the one page, what this is, is in moving from a system where, as you say, extra grants in a way could be handed out within the LTP or the annual plan process, that been a, there's been, staff have made a judgment based on historical spending on what the quantum would be needed if all grants were moved to one place and it's, and assume from what you have said councillor McTavish, that that quantum is, is a combination of what was given out by the Grants Committee and what was given out on average by council in the LTP, using that as a baseline.
Rebecca might prefer to answer it, but.
Um, it's, it's just the figure from LTP. So the Grants Committee, the, the previous community assistance subcommittee has had a set figure year after year, which has not increased and that sits at two hundred thousand for community grants. And, and so we've added, added these figures that are within this report, but we're just noting to councillors that they don't provide any wiggle room for entertaining new applications or increases to existed without cutting existing. And, and that in previous annual plan years, there has not been an annual plan that I've been to that you haven't given new or increased, new civic grants or increases to exist.
That's fine, that's fine. What you've done is you've taken what was spent through the, the community grants and you've taken a quantum that on average was in addition handed out by council and you've added them together and said, that's what we traditionally spent. So it's not an increase in that sense, but it's shifting on a historical basis or changing the framework, but using the history to determine what quantum we start with.
Except that would that prevent between one year and the next, anybody coming to us and asking us that wasn't the grant, the Grants Committee for anything that we have actually turned into?
So events, events also used to come to annual plan, events, people who wanted to apply for events funding. And when the events and festival strategy was developed, that was a change in that process, so that was removed from the annual plan. And what's happened is that those organisations still come to annual plan, but they seek increases in the total pool, that four hundred thousand, rather than asking for an increase to their specific grant. So I imagine that that's what will begin to happen with these sorts of grants, is their organisations will come and suggest an increase to the, the total quantum rather than their specific grant.
So this isn't going to be the end of it one way or the other. If we ratchet in an increase of, you know, twenty thousand or fifty thousand a year or whatever on average we have actually given out, it's likely that we're just going to keep getting asked for an increase in the increase, whatever it does anyway.
It has decreased significantly for events, so the, the amount of submissions that, that the annual plan, annual plan attracts for events funding is far less than what it was in the previous system. And it's, it's only the occasional submission that suggests that the event pool needs to be increased. Um, staff response, if a submission comes in asking for additional funds for a grant through annual plan, staff response will be, um, annual plan no longer deals with these, it's, it's to be forwarded to the Grants Committee.
That includes the stadium, does it, that the event has produced?
There's a new process being developed as we speak about that.
But that, to be clear, that doesn't currently involve the events, uh, sorry, the Grants Subcommittee at all.
Still events budget.
Councillor Bizet.
Oh, no, I, um, my question's being answered, I, I, I've got a resolution to move if.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stans.
Would it be fair to say, Rebecca, that with the change in the process for events, the allocation of funding has been far more rigorous than it used to be by council making decisions on the fly as a result of submissions to the annual plan?
That would be my observation, yes.
So in chat, in, in, in this proposal, our initial expectation would be that there wouldn't be a significant increase in demand, there is more likely to be, because it's more rigorous, people have to be more thoughtful about applying for their grant. So that will put some people off. And secondly, because there is a rigorous process in deciding, that, that would then result in a better form of control on the total expenditure. Thank you.
Councillor McTavish.
Just to point out though, that the, the budget, and maybe I, maybe I have a bias here because I have to chair this committee, but the, the budget in this year's LG, draft LTP is sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars less than last year.
I'm not saying we shouldn't give that.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, are there any further questions before I go to the motion? Councillor Bizet, do you want to?
Yeah, um, I, I think, I think this is a good suggestion. Um, and it gives the Grants Subcommittee, um, a greater degree of flexibility. I don't think it will, well, as I said before, it's a sort of a nebulous thing, I, I, I don't think it will cost the city any more, uh, because they have traditionally, uh, according to the report here, allocated some around anywhere between thirty and sixty thousand dollars, maybe more or less any given year. So I'm suggesting that we do put in a figure of fifty thousand dollars. Um, it won't, as was just mentioned a moment ago, um, affect the budget to any great degree because they've spent less than, there's a, there's a request for less funds this year anyway. So, um, I would move recommendation number one as it is and then recommendation number two, I would, um, suggest a, a figure of fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a second to that? Councillor Stans. May? Okay, other further speakers? Councillor McTavish.
I would just thank my two colleagues for that motion.
Further speakers? Want to speak again, councillor Bizet? All right, I've put it all those in favour, please say aye. I agree. Fair enough. Thank you. So that's, um, that one. We are now on to. We've had a change of data. Probably fourteen point two one.
We've gone with housing.
This is it.
Sorry?
Property housing.
Property housing, probably miscellaneous.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Read the underneath that, um, grants funding.
Just, just to confirm that any, um, social housing, uh, proposal would come back to council to sign off before it happens? Yep, thank you. Property miscellaneous.
Welcome, Peter. Right, we're on page fourteen point two one. And, oh, do you want to, do you want to just wait? Questions, councillor? Councillor Wilson.
Um, this is an area that is changing in government's eyes about the possibilities of social housing, how it works. We had a strategic review, I think, seven years ago, and I'm not su, I'm just wondering, is it time for us to consider, and should we be putting resources into considering the opportunities and or, um, where the government is at? Because it is changing and it's not necessarily, and to ensure that the provision of social housing and meets the needs of the city, should we be having a review or some resources put into understanding that? And you may not be the right people to be doing that because you're very operational maintaining the houses and it may be more a question to see. Or, Rebecca, sorry. Sorry, the question is, because of the government's change in policy on social housing and the fact that we haven't done a review, I think, for six or seven years on social housing, is there a need for resources to be put into this area to ensure that we are in the right space as a city to provide the social housing needed for and demanded?
Last year, um, we had further conversations with the, the author of the housing need assessment that was commissioned in two thousand and ten, eleven. But subsequent to that, the, the, um, central government have been moving quite quickly in the area of social housing and the Metro, Metro Mays grouping, um, discussed social housing and thought it might be a good idea for all the councils to start working together on the issue. So we attended a meeting in Wellington in late December where we had conversations with other, with Auckland, Wellington, Christchurch, Hamilton, Tarawa councils. And we're meeting again in February to, um, to continue that work and work on a joint memorandum of understanding around, um, the, the central government's policy on social housing. In the interim, my recommendation is that we continue as is until, because there's so much change in the central government's space, that does not affect. So at the moment, they've got a new income related rent subsidy that is not eligible for tenants of local government housing and it seems to be a bit of an anomaly, which local government is working with central government to try and change their minds on, but it might be a little tricky. Um, and other, other local authorities are looking for different ways of, um, getting around those rules. And so I think we let other councils see how that falls. So I'm not sure in the short term that there's a requirement for additional funding for that, but.
Well, I think the context is that, I think Leah Karan has suggested that this housing going out into the, um, private sector from the public sector and that reduction may push tomorrow less, given your statement.
The research and follow-up that we did working with Rebecca's team on the subject is that there's no clear steer yet, so, um, we've been unable to establish the quantum, if any, that's been, that's arguably supposed to be going into the private sector. And whilst that might be politically talked about, I guess, um, that it hasn't got any, substance yet at an operational level with housing New Zealand or other, others. So we haven't been able to establish that there is or isn't yet.
Oh, sorry. It could be that, um, that through these discussions with other local authorities, that we, we decide on a joint work plan that may need some resourcing and so, but we can't give a figure around that now. So it may be that we have to come back in May and suggest that, yes, yes, there is some.
The, the main thing for me is having some confidence that we're, yes, the ground, understanding the issues and we don't need resources today. Thank you.
Thanks for that confidence.
Other questions? Right, that's housing, miscellaneous, fourteen point two seven. Question, councillor Calvert.
I take it that when we Dunedin City own property and we're charging them to somebody, either one of our departments as it were, or a community group in a way of rental or something, we're intending to charge that at what we understand to be commercial rates, such as that, you know, if we make a grant to somebody, we're making a grant of the rental that we've determined as a realistic commercial rental to put into those facilities.
Uh, yeah, in, in the first instance, our benchmark is, um, a market or commercial rental. That's fine. And, uh, often then it seems that there's a debate or discussion takes place around what that figure really is. Um, and then, um, in some instances. And then in some instances, specifically in front of me, the grant actually matches what the rental is anyway, so we're dollar swapping.
So the only place that we don't do that market rental sort of appraisal is our own social housing, is that, or are there other places?
Social housing isn't a miscellaneous, but to answer your question, the social housing rent is set on a market basis in the first instance and then taken back so that we come out at a fiscally neutral position. So you have to start somewhere, and so you try and start at a, you always start at a market or what's out there in the market position, and then work back from there.
So all of our properties, including the social housing, starts at the market?
That's always the first parameter, and then other strategic values are assessed and the markets, the rents set accordingly. And in this case, that's a neutral cross position.
And are there other places where that gap isn't really, I mean, that gap isn't accounted for in social housing? Is there other places where the gap between market and what's, what we're actually charging?
I can't say that it's been quantified because it's hard to find out who the other leasing might be and what they might pay, because they're such specific properties, that's why they sit in this portfolio. They're there for a strategic purpose, and then it's then about setting a rental that minimizes the cost of the road pay at the end of the day.
And are we charging, as far as you're aware, rates as we would commercially or market rates on all properties? That's factored in on all properties that city properties administers?
Again, the basis of it is, but I would say that there are other reasons which we don't determine why the rent might be reduced to something less to make or enable, probably not make, to enable the activity to occur, because it's seen as for some other strategic reason and the benefits of the city.
But in each property, you could say, this is the market rate, this is the market commercial rate, and this is why we don't charge that if we don't...
I could, if I set about doing it. We haven't actually done that review.
Rebecca, you had something to add?
Traditionally, the rates are charged as per other organisations, and then they receive rates relief through our grant system. So the rates are offset, but they pay the full and get a rebate through our grants.
Councilor Thompson.
This, I just might understanding something on the council, there's something simple I'm just missing, but in the cash, effectively, we've got a decrease in cash of in excess of a million each year. Where's that coming from? I can't work out where it's coming from. I don't know where it's going to, I can't work out where it's coming from.
So can you ask the question again, I'm sorry?
Well, we've got a net cash... Oh, I'm sorry. Fourteen twenty-nine.
Rebecca, could you have a...
Tell the question again, sorry.
Well, we've got an ongoing net decrease in cash each year in the cash flow, and I just can't work out where that's being funded from. Have we got a large balance sheet reserve or something?
Excuse me, across the whole property portfolio, there's other cash surpluses that all offset this.
Ah, okay.
In the miscellaneous, yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Warr.
On fourteen thirty, we CCTV opt again, two hundred thousand dollars in seventeen, eighteen, and then again twenty twenty-one. Is that just simply renewals?
Yep, yeah, that's a big program.
Okay, so we don't need any in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four as well? I just watched the pattern.
No, to the best of my knowledge, based on what anticipated is required for renewal of the infrastructure that's there in the periods that are required. So that's field wear and tear and upgrades. Now, that's based on the asset management plans that we've got at this stage.
So every three years, it's a renewal?
It may or may not be every three years, it'd be the degree of degradation, but it's based on the infrastructure that's there at the moment and what's needed to be done. And they're trying to also spread it out to match the available funds.
Other work being done in the octagon?
Yep.
Moving down to property operational, fourteen point three three. Councilor Wilson.
Just understanding the public toilets, I'm delighted with the community development and infrastructure services, sort of. The request, sorry, I'm just trying to find it, another council work. The lose for the octagon, where does that come into that? Was that operational this year?
Yes, yeah. The twenty fifteen, sixteen, we've got two hundred thousand budgeted for what's commonly called the octagon toilets.
Yep, that is, that is postponed, yeah.
Well, wherever.
So what, no, is it wherever or is it that project?
It is, it's the octagon, what's called the octagon toilet project, and currently the design work's been done around toilets based in Harrop Street.
Yep.
And there's issues in consenting and resource consent issues being addressed in relation to that at the moment.
But then, so that's all just that project, they're out and over?
Just the octagon toilets alone in that year.
Going out, so the eighteen, nineteen, has that been allocated out or is it...
Then the toilet program, as it's been called, reactivated, so it's put on ice, feeding the state of the finances, and it's understood that when the finances are arguably meant to approve, then the toilet program is reactivated. And that's providing community toilets in a number of identified locations around the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Benson.
Just on that matter, does anyone share my reservations about a good sense of putting a twenty-four hour toilet outside the interest of the Glenroy?
I haven't had an experience to me other than from what your concept...
You say that the concept's been worked up on the basis of a toilet in the Harrop Street area.
Yeah, yeah.
A final decision is yet to be made, or is that going to move quietly like the sands of tide?
A couple of years ago, we put a paper to council workshop, talking about areas around the octagon that would be appropriate for public toilets. At that workshop, there was a general consensus of opinion that Harrop Street was the site, and that is where we have placed our investigations, done our design. So from a staff's point of view, based on the decision from the workshop, we are continuing with the Harrop Street site.
Can I, I think we just need to clarify, it was a council decision, I think?
It was from a council workshop.
No, we don't make...
The workshop couldn't have made a decision. It went on from there, a recommendation from the council workshop, but my understanding, and confirmed by staff, is that a council decision was made, because I recall there was a request to add CTV cameras and an inquiry as to whether they could be placed on the roof of the town hall to, as a security measure. So it was definitely a decision made to cite it in that spot.
I think there was a decision made at last year's annual plan, in respect of trying to cite the cameras also to cover the side of the church. I'm just really wanting to register my concern that I think the decision needs to be revisited. I acknowledge that the locating of a public toilet, especially a twenty-four one, twenty-four hour one, is never without difficulty, but given that the conference centre and the town hall have all just undergone a really expensive renovation to put the immediate attractor of difficulties straight outside the door of the Glenroy, I think is a real no-brainer, and so I will revisit this as part of the LTP, I guess.
You could move a motion, as it were.
I'd be very happy to follow the chief executive's suggestion to formally move that the issue of the sighting of the toilet be revisited.
Okay.
Other than the unfortunate language that was suggested to move.
I'm happy to accept a tentative resolution. And we'll get through questions on this, and then we'll see if there's a second for that. So we're still in property operational, are there any other questions?
Just on the municipal chambers' block renewal rebuild, is that thirty thousand removal, does that remove that item, or does it just remove part of the cost of that? I'm at fourteen thirty-three.
It's still here. They just put a...
Been, it's been moved to the state of twenty-four, twenty-five.
All right, now, could you, Councilor Benson, give us a rundown on your proposed motion?
Well, I obviously party to the original decision, and I know citing a public toilets is extremely problematic, and I certainly don't challenge the issue of the need for a twenty-four hour facility in the centre of the city, or more than one. But I am really concerned about the proposal to place it outside the entrance to the revamped Glenroy, actually. I just think that will attract a great deal of, given what's already happening in terms of the church grounds, I think we're just asking for trouble. So I just, I'll move therefore that this issue be, come back to the committee around for further consideration.
Second to councillor Hawkins. Councilor Wilson, pass on.
Just a question of staff. If this motion passes, how long will that delay? Considering that we've already done a substantial amount of work on the proposal, and it was a lengthy process to date so far, how long would you see this pushing the project out potentially? And even, and the financial ramifications? Because my gut feeling is that this would not happen in the next financial year, or the financial year's tested, given the history of the site.
Estimate would be six months, and the adding of costs I couldn't quantify, we'll just have to look at what the options are.
It's worth remembering that a lot of the options to date have been exploring the option of extending the use of the existing toilet and the difference for staffing that twenty-four hours a day and the security issues of that. That issue has been dealt with, and it is cheaper to install a new automated toilet system rather than try and have the toilet staff. So we won't be revisiting that issue, it'll simply be the issue of whether Harrop Street is the best location, which should be quicker than starting again from scratch.
Can I ask another question? And I'm happy, I may be incorrect in my memory of this, but my recollection of the facts is that the one reason the Harrop Street site was looked at is because the base infrastructure water services are easily attainable on that site, which were not necessarily easy at other sites, and therefore reduce the cost, is that your correct, your understanding?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
The other, just if I may, just in terms of when we looked at various sites around the octagon, there was really only two sites that were even able to be considered, given a lot of the other sites were on things like Road or Zoo, where there would be comments with traffic site amongst that sort of thing. But certainly there is another potential site that was put to the council workshop that we could certainly put forward to you and yet to have another, and both of the sites that we are looking at are actually owned by council, so there is no issue in terms of having to purchase a piece privately owned then.
And the next question is then, but does the other site come at any other possible cost that we should be adding into a long-term plan?
Okay, any other speakers? One sec, Ellen.
I'm going to vote against this, only because I don't think we should be keeping on looking at things and unlooking at them and sending our staff off to do something and unsending our staff off to do something. I think a decision's been made, and I think just making a decision once on the best information we can have is the best way we can do it, so I won't be voting for it.
Councilor Warr.
I'm also going to vote against it because I think we need to get on with this and get it done. I think, I totally appreciate councillor Benson Pope's issues with coming out of the Glenroy and seeing toilets, but I think we can do some sort of decorative or some sort of blend in to ensure that it's not, all of a sudden you come out of Glenroy and you look straight at two silver gleaming loops. So I think the key thing is we need to get some toilets built and underwashed so they can be used.
Councilor McTage.
I'm wondering whether it would be possible to hold this motion on the, just leave it on the table until after lunch, given that it is twelve thirty?
I acknowledge that there's a doubt, I'm pretty sure that there was a council decision, but nonetheless, it would be prudent to be sure, so we will adjourn. And it seems that there is not a paper on this, and there wasn't a decision, so it was a very prudent hiatus. So we're back to, well, we're not back to square one, we've just got a clean slate, so we can, so...
I've added the words, Mr Chairman and councillors, if you're least opportunity, I don't want to create unnecessary delay with this, but I would like a reassessment.
That's good, so it's...
We could leave off revisited because it turns out we haven't visited it.
Well, it was about to be built, so there you go. Five times enough to seal it.
We're still in, we're still in a discussion, there's a motion on the table, move to councillor Benson Pope, second to councillor Hawkins. Are there any other speakers to this councillor, Wilson? In light of new, after the new evidence, et cetera, we'll just put a line under that and allow speakers, council.
I don't know, I had spoken to her already, I'd ask a question, but I...
You were first.
I asked a question. Apologies, I didn't make it clear at the time. Although I didn't make a statement about it. I am going to vote against this, not because I understand all of that, the issues and why it's coming, but I actually think this is an operational matter, and a lot of workers have already gone under the bridge, to look at suitable sites. I don't know that there'll be any more suitable site for the area to provide the service within the octagon or near to the octagon. I think if we're getting down to this level of operational matters, we've got a problem as a council.
Councillor Hawke.
I agree with this for the simple reason, Harrop Street doorway into the building down there is going to be used as a toilet, the same as all the ones down the main street, and you can't get into the toilet, so we need to get it away from that area.
It will be a twenty-four hour toilet.
Yeah, but when, if there's two or three people wanting to go... Yeah, but when, if there's two or three people wanting to go to it, people ain't going to wait.
Right. Well, for my part, I will support this. Just from conversation, I have ascertained that there are a couple of options that might well be viable. For instance, the niche, the other one was the niche behind the Jersey shop in the other lane. Municipal lane, there's a little niche in the building there and it has been suggested by someone else that the telephone boxes could be slightly enlarged, made to look more like telephone boxes and had toilets in them. And then they'd be completely out in the area. So.
So everyone goes to every toilet.
Last was even mentioned by one anonymous person and in, and in. That person will remain anonymous. But so for that reason, I think that there are options that could be considered quite quickly. I'm concerned about the delay, but it's clear that there is, there are issues with Harrop Street and around the safety and proximity to the Glenroy. So I can see the reason for this, so I'll be supporting it. Are there any further, just a question?
When we talk Harrop Street, and I appreciate where councillor Benson Pope is coming from, but it does allow some flexibility in terms of space. So I'd just like to think that if this is passed and we start looking at the options, that we fully conclude that Harrop Street is not a goer, because I'm not sure whether that's what this is saying or is this saying that directly across from the Glenroy entry door is not a goer, because Harrop Street is more than just that space.
Well, do you want to answer that?
I was just going to say that I haven't got a fixed view about it. I raised the issue because I was concerned. I'm able to be convinced that that's a good site, but that's an argument I'm.
What I think councillor Noon's question is, this isn't, well.
No, it's not. It's not excluding wherever the site. I don't, which I assume is beside the pocket park or back in the corner or somewhere. But I'm quite flexible and I like the issue discussed and take it from there.
Right. If there's no further speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? No. Can I have a show of hands, just to be sure, please? For the, all those in favour, please put your hand up. It's carried. All right. Now, the next area is civil defence. Questions councillors, it's 14.39.
Will we survive?
If there's no questions on civil defence, or even on civil defence, we'll go on to civic leadership and administration, councillor Bannister.
Sorry, I haven't kept up with the play. Do civil defence still have a garage full of Dad's Army type generators with sirens on them that they intend taking to the top of the hills when a tsunami alert comes? Do they still house this kind of Victorian infrastructure?
We have tsunami warning equipment.
And its generators on trailers with sirens.
Our team use at the moment, there are some trailer pulled sirens, I believe, but there are other options as well.
Can I suggest, as I have for many years now, that we simply option off this redundant, old fashioned, three footers of an hour to set up and get going equipment and replace it with a very simple system as used by most schools in the city, where people simply get a text alert to say that there's a tsunami coming. A, it's far cheaper, B, it'd be far more effective, it could be almost instant, and C, we wouldn't have a garage full of essentially redundant equipment that we keep paying maintenance on.
Your worship. Councillor Thompson.
My, I mean, I'm eating at the moment, my phone has switched off. Can I be assured that you will tell me if I've got texts that the tsunami's on the way? Your worship. May or may not be right with regards to the historic machinery or equipment we've got stored somewhere. My understanding is we had a tsunami, a salami. It's too early after lunch. Pam was looking for entertainment, she mentioned lunchtime, so. So we did have a tsunami alert a year, a practice two or three years ago and helicopters were used. And that's my understanding is the main, the main source of the type of equipment that would be used to alert the general public. And obviously the texting is an option as well, but councillor Thompson has alluded to a deficiency in that system if your phone is turned off, so.
Are there any other questions? We're on civic leadership and administration now, which is page 14.45. Councillor McTavish.
Just wondering if, Ms Green, you can talk us through the $200,000 reduction in the 2GP?
That's because with the change in timing for 2GP, we had $200,000 in this one entry year. It's not being required, so we've carried it forward, which means a reduction for us for next year.
Any further questions on the civic governance process?
Can I just ask the governance manager, whereabouts in these budgets would I find the line that relates to the expenditure on staff servicing, OIA requests from elected members?
We don't have a separate line item for that, councillor.
Do you identify what that quantum might be?
I cannot.
Any other questions? All right. I will move recommendations one to five on pages seven and eight. Second to councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against? Now, let me just explain the order in which we're going to do things from now. I've got a, very quickly, very shortly, I've got an unscheduled item, a very short one, but the greater change will be, instead of going on to museums, libraries and art gallery, we'll go on to sport, recreation and leisure because of the availability of both councillors and staff, one way or another, today and on Monday. But we have an unscheduled item, councillor Calvert, you might like to explain the.
I'd like to move a resolution and the reason it's unscheduled now is that it's for some urgency, which is to temporarily change the name of Logan Park driveway to Brendan McCullum Drive during the World Cup, which we can, we can do on a temporary basis and it's a way, I think, of honouring our local boy during the course of this cricket time. It responds partly to Wellington giving Brendan the keys to the city, for example, and it would be hard to think that we shouldn't admire and respect his contribution, at least as much as Wellington might, might. We'd like to think he's our boy done good and that this does not presuppose that a long term name change will happen because that's something that would need to be consulted with the people. It's just a temporary thing and if it was to become permanent, then it would go through the proper process and the staff have already done some work towards it, but that's a separate issue to the resolution I want to move now.
Do I have a second up, please? Councillor Hall? Okay. Let's move to secondary discussion. Councillor Thompson.
I just want to be sure that councillor Calvert is aware of the importance of superstitious behaviour in the art of cricket and that when Wellington awarded Brendan McCullum the keys of the city, he was out second ball for naught immediately following. And as long as she's prepared to take responsibility for the result of her actions, then I'm prepared to support this.
Mr Chairman, just can you just clarify the procedure here? This is a council meeting. I don't think you could add things unannounced to a council meeting unless they were added to the agenda at the start of the meeting.
As a matter of urgency and.
They still have to be notified at the beginning of the meeting, do they not?
That you're probably correct.
Thank you.
So it's out of order? Presumably, but we're halfway through it. We'll continue to be out of order until we finish it. It'll only take a couple of minutes.
Can I just respond briefly to councillor Thompson's? I'm not proposing to make, give him the keys of the city, so I think that that superstition will not persist.
Hopefully, we won't have a local bar and we're also offering Mr McCullum free drinks as well. I endorse what councillor Calvert's put forward. In the long term though, I would like to see it named Bren, not Brendan McCullum Drive, but McCullum Drive to recognise not only Brendan, but the family contribution to cricket in Dunedin.
Any other speakers? Councillor Wood.
I share some of the nervousness of councillor Benson Pope dealing with this in this way. I mean, Alison Shanks, that spent a considerable amount of time on Logan Park as well, doing cycling training and giving a lot back to the city. I think this, and that's just the start of it, that and that road is really important to a whole lot of people. I think we're doing this on the hoof. I absolutely admire Brendan McCullum. I think there are other ways the city can do that and I hope that the mayor will be doing something leading up to the World Cup that will show that, but I'm not sure that renaming the street or road temporarily or permanently on the hoof is the right way to do this and I'm really nervous about it. I'm not a gun recognising Brendan McCullum as a fantastic and exciting cricketer.
Ready now, please? Councillor McTavish.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, your worship, is there a reason why this can't be considered later in this meeting? When we have had some time to reflect on the proposal and a second up for the proposal.
But the main reason that it would be not prudent to leave it to the rest of the meeting is that it would take just a damn sight longer. But if it's the will of the meeting that it be adjourned until the end of the meeting, that's fine. It was a small item that was asked to come up because it's a, it has to be gone on quite soon and it's temporary thing and that's why I agreed to put it up. But if it's the will of the meeting that we leave it, then so be it. But I just think it'd take a lot longer.
Could I call it Susie Bates?
You're up, Chair, and I haven't spoken, I'll work for the motion to put. You've moved the motion to put? I will do that then. All those who say aye? Aye. Against? Could I have a show of hands?
That's the motion, not the motion.
Procedure. Processually, I have heard in that I needed a second up for councillor Benson Pope's motion to put the motion. Is there a second up for that? Councillor Hawkins? So I'll now put the motion to put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against? Could I have a show of hands on this one, please? Those who wish the motion to be put now? It's carried. So I will put the motion now. All those in favour of the motion, please say aye. Which motion?
To rename.
Temporarily, rename Harrop Street. Could I have a show of hands on this, please? Those who want to support temporary, temporary renaming it? It's carried.
Abstain.
Now we move on to sport and recreation. And that's page 16.1. Right, we're on page 16.1. And I'll close it up, questions? No questions on 16.1, product services, just the 16.2 part and then we'll move on to the report. The question on 16.2. Councillor Thompson.
It's more a question around process. In the normal course of events, people will come along and they'll submit and come along at hearings with requests with regard to funding and things. And the, I think we're all aware that there is an issue sitting out there around the physio pool. Now, because of the time constraints of providing, providing information, there is, there's no recognition of that as an issue in, in these, and that's not a criticism of staff. But I'm not, I'm just not sure whether or not it's appropriate to, for us to consider something that we know to be a likelihood in which there's been various conversations about. And if, and if we should be considering it in this discussion, quite how one knows that, given it's not on the agenda and things? So I'm just seeking some advice, really.
Making a matter of urgency.
We could rename the pool the.
Then you load it.
So can you just re?
Well, I'm aware that councillors will provide with some information, that the community generally and council, because it's had a number of informal discussions about it, is aware that the physiotherapy pool, unless taken over in full by the pool trust at the end of June, will cease to operate. And the, the trust has had to do considerable work around establishing what the likely capital costs of continuing to keep that pool open were, before they could even consider whether or not there'd be a fundraising appeal, for example, and before they could really understand what their ongoing costs were. Now, that work was completed just before Christmas, so it was too late to be considered by staff as part of this package. And, but it's, it's clear that now that we know that the capital work that's required can probably be covered by a fundraising appeal, that there are no major issues like earthquake related issues, for example, that might make the raising of that money stupid. But the operational costs, that there, it is pretty clear that it looks like there's going to be a shortfall before other funding is found, around $100,000 per annum. And we know that there is likely to be an approach to council for some portion.
So your question is around the process for putting it in to this?
Is it, is it something that we should be putting in? I'm suggesting it is something that we should be putting in for consultation because otherwise if we wait until the hearing, we can't.
Fair enough. My suggestion is that we hold it up until the end of this meeting and then allowing for the right process to include it in the agenda, we can do it then, because it basically is like any other unfunded proposal. And I, my feeling is it doesn't, despite the fact that it's a pool, it doesn't have to sit in aquatics.
I just wanted to ensure that we don't just pretend it's not there.
No, no, no. So I'm happy to accept it, given the right process for getting it on to the agenda, but I think we should put it at the end of this meeting. but I think we should put it at the end of this meeting along with the other unfunded proposals. And that's towards the will of the council.
Can we consider it because of its urgent nature? I believe it does have an urgent nature.
Yes, that's fine. I mean, my concern is to find a reason, a way, the right process, we don't always follow the right process, um, on to the agenda, but I don't think it has to happen now. So I feel you're always happy with that. Happy with that, councillor Thompson?
Yes.
So, 16.2, any other questions around that?
Your Worship, I've just got a question on the financials.
Yep.
We had Barry Williams from the Strathery Community Board speak to us with regards to the running costs of the Middlemark, and I think off the top of my head, he said something along the lines that the $10,000 that they receive annually has been that amount for quite some time. And he indicated that the community put in a reasonable amount, and I think in kind plus donations, it was somewhere between 10 and 20K. So I just wondered whether there was an appetite from this council to sort of match what they, what they're contributing locally. And clearly, if they're putting in 10K, we're already meeting that, that amount, but if they're putting more, I don't think it's unreasonable for us, as a local authority, to contribute more. So with that in mind, I'm happy to move that we allocate an additional 2,000 for 15 and 16, and increasing another 2,000 the following year, so it'll be 12,000 for 14, and then 17 and 16 as a third year.
Is there a second if for that?
I understand councillor Woodson sits on the trust, so...
I'm a member of the Strathery Committee, I'll be right into one minute. I'm not sure if I have a fair interest or if it gives me a conflict, I mean, no one else is here.
So you're sitting there?
Yeah, but I don't, I'm fairly in interest, I'm not sure if it's a conflict, though.
So is there a second if for that? So you're going to cancel the pool? Okay. Do you wish to...
The following year, an extra two, so it'd go from, yeah, so 16, 17, 14,000, and then 17, 18, it'd be 16,000, and to stay at that level.
Councillor Hawkins?
Just a question really, and my understanding was that this was being looked at more broadly in report, the report on page 18.6.1? Rather than dealing with a community facility at a time?
Yeah, so I think that that particular report deals with the process around increasing or considering increases or decreases to grants, which sit within operational budgets, but this is a specific, this is specific to an aquatics budget, so...
But circumventing the 18.6.1?
Well, I think, if I may ask you, I think the issue with the report, or it's not an issue with the report, but the report details a process which would mean that we considered those in the first year of the new triennium. That's what, so the report's recommendation is that we establish a process that would allow it to be considered then. I think what councillor Noon is foreshadowing is that he considers this a more urgent review issue for review than the first. Maybe of the new triennium.
Yes, I just know that, because we've had the, seen the community board chairs' report, we haven't had any time to look at that. Just concerned that we've got an overall aquatics budget, there are various pools that ask for funds from the city to fund those. We haven't done any analysis and providing advice about the impact of that on the budget and what happens to the rest of the pools around the place that are also receiving various levels of grants and funds and...
Good speakers. I guess my question, I can, I can understand the rationale for this and I can understand the equity in it. My question is, and I think this is what Mr Avery is referring to, is the precedent and the comparator that it creates with other pools and with other communities. And I feel that we should be a little more prudent before jumping in and granting money to one, we should just look at the random... Around all of them. So I have some reservations in that regard, which would make it a bit difficult for me to support this at this time. But I understand the motivation. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Thompson?
I share your concern, but essentially, I'm not quite sure with the report that councillor McTavish is referring to, that's supposed to be in the first year of the triennium. So would that mean that in fact if nothing would happen between now and whenever that is, quite some time, three years?
Three years, yeah. I think what we could do, and what I was hoping to suggest in relation to that report, is that we actually bring that review forward, ask staff to prepare a review in time for final budgets, if the proposed approach is supported by council. So that would be my suggestion, and then we would be able to consider all of them.
So are you saying that this report is yet to be considered?
Correct.
Right. So my suggestion is councillor Noon, that we might consider laying this on the table until such time as we've considered that other report, and then I'm happy to pick it up, if, and be guided by you as to whether you still want to pursue it, whether you think it's necessary at that point, depending on what is decided on the other...
Look, at the end of the day, I need seven other people to support the whole, and in this case, probably only six when there's one away. But look, my motivation is that clearly the, if I can respond, Your Worship, clearly the Strathery Community Board have raised this issue before, and most of the other pools, my understanding, have received increases over time, and I could well be wrong. Middlemark may have received some increase over time as well, but it just seems to me that the Strathery have indicated that there's a significant amount of community support, and I was just trying to, I suppose, help balance that community support with some further support from the city, to recognise that the service that they're providing along with the city, but they are doing most of the work. But I'm happy to let it, leave it until, and we can deal with it under the, the item that we're going to deal with shortly, 18. whatever, that's fine, but I do see it as quite, quite separate, but happy to let it.
I understand that. So I take it that for it to be laid on the table, and I'll be guided by the governance manager in this regard, for it to be laid on the table, does someone need to move that? Who hasn't spoken? You move? So move it to councillor Desai, second to councillor Staines, that it lay on the table. All those who say aye? Against? We can, we can turn it out. I think it probably will get a better hearing in, under those... Right. Are there any other... Just as councillor McTavish, that report you're referring to, I don't...
I'm not sure exactly where you'll need to be taking it, Your Worship, but...
Because I...
Community facility, it's meant to come under the museums, libraries and art galleries budget line, Bernie wrote the report.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, we'll get to it then. I just was looking for it here, in, under sport and recreation.
Yes, no, it covers a range of facilities, but Bernie was there.
Thank you. All right, well, if we've done with aquatic services in terms of the budget, then we can move on to the aquatic facilities mission in Marsfield.
See if you can do the surf life saving or the other reports in the Strathery aquatic facilities, that's fine. We'll just change the staff round up here, that's all.
I'm just conscious that Anne is here and she's here on a day that she wouldn't normally be, so I might too. All right. And you've been wrestling with this. So do you want to lead off with an introduction, or do you just want to go straight?
Well, the report speaks itself. It's an update on a report that we provided to the council just before Christmas when we received the Torrey Facilities Trust report. You should have an updated, updated version of that. Over the weekend, we reviewed the estimated visitor numbers, so you should have an updated version, looking at the benchmark information available from other pools, and other information that we could establish both from, from other sources. Anne and I sat down on Monday morning, revisited the numbers, and we think that we've increased the estimated numbers that we think will come to a four-pool option to 190,000 from 135,000, and the numbers then that are in the report reflect that update. That is less than the trust estimate of 245,000. It's fair to say that there are various views based on how you read the various benchmarking data and how you take account of the various factors that are different between different pools in different locations to try and get to that estimate. Our view is it's going to go 190 if the trust is right, and there are more, then there's only a financial upside to that as opposed to financial downside. So we've been perhaps, I wouldn't say conservative, but I think we've got some realistic numbers. The financials themselves, which are included in the report, have been developed up using the standard finances spreadsheet that's been checked a number of times by Laurie, Carolyn and Grant, so we're reasonably confident that the spreadsheets give the right numbers. We've included a couple of options that might give a sense of a range of options. A question that's been raised is the impact on the strategic fit and the spatial plan. And in the spreadsheet, or the large spreadsheet that you've had circulated which identifies that strategic fit, I think we've indicated that as you go from a two-pool to a three-pool to a four-pool option, it's more likely to act as a destination. Three-pool option has a leisure pool, so likely to be more attractive for families with children. The four-pool option includes a hydrotherapy pool, which is likely to be more attractive to people who want a hydrotherapy pool. So we've done as best we can in terms of, I try to not use any ageist terminology in describing those that might want to use a hydrotherapy pool, but it's a broader range of potential users. So we've tried to be as clear as we can around the assumptions that have given rise to these numbers in the report, so...
Questions, councillors? Councillor McTavish?
I, um, everyone will be aware, I've been circulating questions about this, and I understand that there is some further work going on currently to try to get an answer to one of those. The other one which I'm interested in is in relation to the water infrastructure, which we had a one-line, five-word issue highlighted in relation to, in the strategic fit document that was circulated on Monday, and I'm wondering if we could have any further explanation of that.
Simon can talk you through where we got to, where the team just got to with regard to destination, as close as we can.
So the strategic fit document that you circulated earlier in the week, it was just really a first, first cut to look at all the various reports and see how they fitted. I guess the thing to bear in mind with the spatial plan is that it, when you assess any, any project against that spatial plan, it is more of an art than a science, so it's very difficult, I think, for us to look at any particular project and say, this is what the, this is the option that best fits. It's always going to be a judgment call, and I think that's an important to make, point to make first up. Well, I guess at the heart of the spatial plan, what you have to bear in mind is that it's really focusing on, on the city as the heart, and that anything that you might consider, a project that you might consider outside of the city centre, outside of that main Dunedin city, you have to weigh up what, what impact that has, and anything that becomes more and more of a destination pool, as Tony has said, becomes increasingly at odds with your spatial plan. And as I said before, it's an art, not a science, so as the options progress up in terms of size and scale, and as it becomes more of a destination, hence it becomes more at odds with the, with the spatial plan. So it's, it's a sliding scale, it's not easy to say this option is totally at odds and this one's a perfect fit. Do you want to add any more here?
A few things that we do know, though, are that the options were developed with the community in mind. There are examples of other facilities, and one of the attachments is the benchmarking data, of other facilities in South Island that cater for similar-sized towns, that have similar-sized facilities. For example, Rangiora has got a leisure learner's pool plus a spa, and Rollaston also, actually a new pool, has got a leisure learner's hydrotherapy plus a spa. So we do know that. The difference with Mozgill, of course, is that there is a facility such as Moana Pool within fairly close vicinity, so that is different. Also, the trust, the Torrey Communities Facilities Trust, did a survey of Mozgill people for which they got 2,300 responses, and the people who said things were important, the, my stats here, 92% said a learner's pool was important or highly important in Mozgill, these are Mozgill people, 87% in the lap pool, 82% the leisure pool, 63% the hydrotherapy pool. So while that doesn't give you an answer, it might give you some guidance about demand and what other places are doing.
In relation to the water and waste issues which have been flagged in the strategic fit document, is anyone able to expand on that, those issues which were flagged? So the issue that was flagged, it reads recommended option could impact water and waste service levels to existing customers.
No, I don't think we've had any more work done on that in the time we've had, so we can have some more of that, unless...
Through the chair, Brendan had just gone to find, find the answer for water and waste.
I know that in the, when we did the December report, there was a concern about water capacity and certainly water discharge in the networks. I'm not aware of doing any more work on that in respect of the pool option itself, so we'd need to do that.
Can I, can I just follow up on the answer Anne gave to councillor McTavish's question about the impact on the spatial plan? I'm, I'm interested in the relationship between, not between the size of the town and the facility, but whether the facility in, say, Rollaston or Rangiora, wherever it was, was designed to cater for growth or not? Because I think that's actually a critical point. You might cater for the demand that you think is there, or you might build a, if you, if you have a very fast-growing community, we're expecting you to have a fast-growing community, you would naturally be much bigger. And I'm interested in how Mozgill compares with those towns that you quoted in that regard. And I don't go with it, I'm being fair and asking you to know the answer.
Just in terms of growth, just, I guess, a comment. Sowen District Council in 2013 was reported to have been the fastest-growing territorial local authority in New Zealand. It grew 30% in the seven years up to the 2013 census. Mozgill is, the growth in Mozgill is... The growth in Moeskill is projected to increase 30%, now that's from 2006 census to 2031. So I think Sowen's growing at a faster rate. I imagine, but I don't know for sure, that in planning a facility at Sowen, they would have taken that into account. But yeah, it is a local facility in a fast-growing area. Probably, yeah, cater for current and future.
So four-pool facility in a much faster-growing area.
Yep. So the hydrotherapy pool also, I think they're fairly recent. I know there's a physio pool here, which has been around for a while, but in terms of having them as part of an aquatic facility, I understand they're fairly recent and are in line with an aging population.
Catherine, are you ready for some of your answers?
Well, I guess just in the light of those two answers, I do have a question staff, and that is, do they feel that with the level of information that we have today, we are in a position to give a clear indication as to the proposed or as to the appropriate-sized facility, Moeskill?
Other than the water and wastewater information, I'm not sure what more information we can provide, it's a judgment call really, about the size of the pool that you'll need to make and about the likely visitation rate and the cost of those. I'm not sure what else we can provide in terms of information that you don't already know, in terms of the nature of the location of the Moeskill pool. Discussions that I've had have ranged between how do you compare to Rollaston or Rangiora or Omaru, where there's only one pool, or Gore, and they're all different. You know, the fact that we've got Moeskill over the hill, we've got a lot of people that commute in from Moeskill, including schoolkids, how does that impact on potential visitation rates? Will it become a destination pool if it's big enough for a whole lot of people that will then drive from Dunedin out to Moeskill because Moana Pool's at capacity? All of those things are judgment calls. I'm not sure what else we can provide.
And in terms of the water and waste infrastructure, if we put an option in today, are you quite comfortable that there will be no ramifications of that which would be difficult to manage?
Well, I think the, we'd need to come back, the report in December noted that there might be some constraints around that, would need to report more fully on that. And it's really just been a factor of time and the availability of people to do some work on it.
So you're comfortable that in the absence of that, we make a decision about a pool, a facility size?
Well, I think so, but you could make a decision today. We then get around a proposal, we then get that modelled up as quickly as we can by water and waste, and we come back before you confirm the draft plan to confirm.
Questions follow on from councillor McTavish's. The, there's a recognition in the spatial plan that, and I'm quoting from your email Anne this morning, the cater for local needs and not act as a destination for other parts of the city. But would you not also accept that at the moment what we have is a significant population that is travelling to a pool that is acting beyond capacity? So that the travel per se is just about which direction it goes in rather than the capacity, or rather than an increase? I mean, if people in Moeskill, swim in Moeskill instead of travelling to Moana, that's presumably overdrunk.
Yeah. At the moment, we've got a Moeskill pool which is only open seven months of the year. It's not a great facility that in itself acts as a destination for people to go there. We've got Moana Pool, if you go up there on a Saturday morning or most other peak times, we can't meet current demand and there's anecdotal stories of people just driving on. One might argue that with a better Moeskill pool, the total number of users of aquatic facilities across the city will increase because we've got more capacity at different locations and people might make different choices about where they might go to. We may potentially see a decrease in usage of Moana Pool and more at Moeskill. We might see no decrease in Moana Pool and just a big increase at Moeskill because people will make decisions. There will be, under the proposals, there's a swim station, for example, out at Moeskill, there's a swim station at the moment, but it'll be expanded out there, which might relieve some of the pressure in Moana Pool. Potentially, some of the clubs, I don't know, like canoe polo, for example, might go out there because they feel that they get more reliable use of space and things. So all those things will add in. I think the best, my prediction would be that we'll get an overall increase in the sheer number of people visiting the pool. There may be as a result a reallocation, and then it's how much of that reallocation goes between the pools and that becomes more difficult.
But I guess the point of my question is that there's, I sense a suggestion that providing this facility is in some way counterintuitive to the spatial plan because it will increase destination travel from one place to another, and I'm suggesting to you that in fact, to the extent that it does that, it is likely to be less than decreasing destination travel from Moeskill to Dunedin.
Possibly. Again, that's where we get into the assessment that everyone makes and different people count with different answers. But it is, I think at the moment, Moeskill Pool doesn't act as an incentive for people to go to in its current state.
Absolutely. I saw the photograph in the paper for the first time and I thought it was councillor Lord's cowshed, but...
I agree, we'll need to check that photo.
My other question is around the question of establishing appropriate size. Would you agree that the nature of the clientele differs very much between those who go to use the learner's pool and those who might go to use the hydrotherapy pool?
Yes, clearly.
So it's not actually, it's not a size issue, it's a relationship between attendance revenue and the nature of the facility that actually has to be established, does it not? That if we were, and I'm just taking this randomly, to remove the learner's pool, to reduce the size, we would probably reduce the revenue by substantially more than we reduce the costs of running the facility?
Possibly. We need to do the numbers. But it is also about levels of service. What level of service do you want to provide? And there are different, the two-pool option would be the minimum, in our view, if you're going to do anything, because that provides the...
My question is not, I'm trying to make a point through a question, that how you, that this is not about what you provide in terms of, in isolation, it's an interaction between what the customer wishes to purchase and what you provide. So you can't look at what you provide in isolation, surely. If you say that an appropriate size is a two-pool option, you also have, you have to look at that, do you not, in terms of the context of what that does to the people who will attend and the revenue projection?
And that's actually what we've done, was try and get the four-pool options and cost it up. The difference between, so Anne may be able to comment, but what the number shows, if you put in a leisure pool, we think that will attract another 55,000 visits. If you put a therapy pool, then we think it'll attract 20,000 additional visits. Now, you can play around that there is an interaction clearly between those, but trying to get to some assessment, Anne, I think, Anne may be able to comment, but the experience in other places is that the leisure pool attracts more participants than the hydrotherapy. So we've tried to build that in and then the funding goes through because the funding is then affected if you put a leisure pool in. Our assessment about the average per visit revenue goes down because by definition you tend to be paying for more children coming in who then decrease the revenue. So we've tried to factor that in as best we can by recognising that there is an interaction between numbers and revenue, and they are complex, we've made some assumptions.
And my last question at this point is...
The options were developed trying to prioritise what would be best for the community. So there's obviously the customer, you know, what the customers want. I think the trust survey bears out that the learner's pool and lap pool are high priorities. The leisure pool is up there, but slightly more nice to have and the hydrotherapy as well, 62% important, but a fair chunk also said nice to have. So they were developed in line with that. I think also, as well as revenue, it's important to think about the purpose of a pool and the importance of children being able to learn to swim in New Zealand, in Moeskill and throughout New Zealand. So the learner's pool is right up there, I think, in terms of purpose of swimming pools. So useful to bear that in mind also.
The growth rate in Moeskill is 6%. Between now and the population numbers that the projections have been worked out on and the pool's likely opening date, you're effectively projecting about an increase of the population by about a quarter. Would that be correct? If I extrapolate out, it'd be slightly more than that probably exponentially.
Not sure on the top of my head, sorry.
20% by 20.
So the information I've gotten, it's not updated 2013, 2006 to 2031, the population of Moeskill is projected to increase 20%.
So I thought I read somewhere in one of the papers that they were predicting maybe over five years, 6%, perhaps I'm not sure, I'll go back and check it out. But just related to that, is there any reason why we would feel obliged to charge the same admission rate at Moeskill as we do at Moana?
Well, it's an entirely council decision. At the moment, it's based on a uniform charge across all the pools, but you could make whatever decision you liked in that sense. I'm not sure whether the, it'd be difficult to know how sensitive the numbers are to price, they might be insensitive, in which case if you put the price up, you may get more revenue if you put the price down, obviously.
Just in terms of the concerns that have been raised in the spatial plan, if people who, the cost of someone in Moeskill to go and swim outside of Moeskill, both in time and money, is quite significant. And if there's a concern about too much transfer from Dunedin to Moeskill, then having a slightly higher admission rate in Moeskill might be considered acceptable by Moeskill people because they're not having to travel and also act as a slight disincentive for a shift from the central city. Would that be a reasonable assumption?
I'm not sure that's a question we can answer. That's again a judgment call that you'll need to know. Potentially it will be, but it might depend on the degree to which there is a differentiation in price as well. And I think one of the things around the, see one of the issues around Dunedin and Moeskill is you do have a quite a large population that commutes in every day, and so that will also potentially affect numbers. You've got established swim squads, there might be a swim squad that establishes that at Moeskill and so kids go out. It's quite a complex space when you get into that.
Councillor Ross?
I just want to, I'm not quite sure, I actually want to, councillor wants him to keep on asking questions because at the moment we're doing really well on the cricket while he was asking questions. Does he want to carry on? Considering his superstitious mind. But I think we're over-emphasising the spatial plan dimension here. And the example I want to give is, we have a fantastic velodrome facility not replicated anywhere else in Dunedin, in Moeskill, and yet we don't have that same issue. And it will be, and that is a destination, I mean, if we had a high number of people cycling and using that facility, you could equally add those arguments, couldn't you, to that it shouldn't be there because it's a destination facility? And at times we're going to need, as we're growing city and need new facilities, that we will have to place them outside of the centre of the city. Is that correct?
I think you'd be hard pushed to argue there'd be as many families would be likely to choose that as a location for a new home for a cycling facility than you would for a general-purpose facility such as a pool. But there is no doubt that some facilities will be located outside of the central city. It's a matter for your own interpretation how, what you place where affects people's behaviour, and that's why it's an art, making that determination's an art, not a science. But there is no doubt that the more of these generalist facilities that you place in the rural villages, you run the risk of creating rural cities.
I'm not sure that Moeskill must be known as a rural.
I'm using the language of the spatial plan.
I appreciate that, and I understand all that, but I think, I mean, I'm just slight disconcerted that, you know, we've got overcapacity, we haven't got enough capacity in a central city one, I'm not quite sure that it's particularly easy and absolutely possible that we can put anything else there. And we almost use that against the need for a demand, a huge capacity to go swimming and acknowledge demand from the community to put one in Moeskill Tauri. It just seems slightly counterintuitive. I could understand if we didn't have a pool at all in the city, having that argument, I can't quite understand it here. And honestly, with cycling, if you saw how successful it is up in Cambridge, you may actually take a different view, it's just that we probably don't, as well as the virtues of some of our great cyclists in Dunedin, the same way we do our cricketers in Rarke Place.
I'm very happy to support an ocean for a beautiful wood velodrome covered or a Moeskill, you can add your location to, if possible.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to come back to another question after that, sorry. I just wanted to ask a question.
I wonder whether we've got some information about a few things. One of them is the mix of population rather than just, I mean, we do know how old they not only are, but we expect them to be during the census period, I gather, but I don't know whether any notice has been taken of the age of them, particularly bearing in mind that the young ones will be paying a different amount, the senior ones may well be paying a different amount, and that insofar as we've got the learn to swim end in particular, there's probably going to be pressure on us and Fair Enough to invest more money in supporting children learning to swim since schools are getting out of that end of things. So it may be that it's not the pure numbers who might be using it, it's the mix, and the mix we might have out there is particularly centred on the people who would naturally be paying less. Is anything been done about that?
What we've tried to do, and it's on page six, Q8, two things, there is an interplay. We've tried to be very clear about our assumptions. There is an assumption that gives rise to the sheer numbers of people that will go there, and then at the bottom of that page, there is our assessment about the average admission charge, which tries to take account of the different ages of people. So we've tried to factor that in through that and tried to be clear about our assumptions, but Anne?
I disagree with Tony. I think it's an aging population in Moeskill. Also, I understand a large number of younger families.
I suppose the point is in terms of doing this, we've tried to work up to some financials that will give, hopefully give you an understanding of the financial cost of any of the options. Each of the inputs that go into that have a series of assumptions based around them. We've tried to be very explicit about the assumptions so that it's clear around our understanding. There are various views around the admission numbers, whether we've got that right or not, around the per visit admission fee, some queries and concerns around the expenditure. This is as good as we can do at the moment in terms of our set of assumptions, which we've tried to make explicit. Any change to those numbers will impact on the bottom line and we can do some modelling around that as well.
And the second, out of three questions is, do we know, when we think of people driving over the hill backwards and forwards depending on which pool they might be wanting to go to, do we have any idea whether when people go to a pool, they do other things? I mean, half the people in Moeskill, it would be good if we had fewer cars on the road because people who were in Moeskill hung around and had a swim in Moeskill. Have we got any reason to think that when they used to come into town, they went to Moana, entered their shopping and did whatever, and now they're still going to do the other things, but they're going to swim back closer to home? So that sort of doesn't make any effect?
I don't know if we've got any information about that. People will make... I don't know if we've got any information about that. People will make different decisions. You know, we know that there are many people who travel in from Moskew into town daily that use the pool. On weekends, it's a bit harder to know. You know, potentially if we have a pool at Moskew, that was the four pools, it catered to a wider range of the entire community. And there was a cafe and there was something else. It might become more of a destination for people to drop their kids off.
I think this cafe is in Moskew already.
Besides the pool. So you're asking us questions that at the end of the day, you'll need to make a judgment. I'm not sure we can give our own views, but I don't think we've got any empirical evidence that might support it one way or the other. I'm not aware of it anyway.
But we could ask people. I mean, no one has. That's just all. It's just a question of whether it's worth asking people. The third question is, have we any reason to think that providing, for example, a hydrotherapy pool in Moskew would make a difference to the number of people using the physio pool?
I don't think we've done any work on that at all. So again, it's potentially whether there'd be an increasing number of people in Moskew who currently don't travel in, that might make use of the hydrotherapy pool because it's there, as opposed to people who travel into the physio pool who would no longer or vice versa. Have we done anything else?
I don't have the details here, but I had a conversation with Michael Stedman about the trust. I do remember him saying that there were a number of organisations who dealt with, I guess, the care of the elderly in that area. He said that at the moment they don't use the physio pool, but they might or would use the physio pool, a therapy pool, if it were adjacent to their business in Moskew. But I don't have the figures on that, but it certainly was mentioned.
Counselor Bazin.
My question's been answered, I wonder.
More questions. Counselor Wai.
Thank you. When we look at the reports and everything else here, has any discussion taken place yet with the Dunedin Swim Coaching Board and their chair? Have they presented any views on this yet?
Not explicitly. I'm aware of an... I've been dealing with this, doing some coaching board for some time now. Last time I spoke, they talked about potentially having a part of the swim coaching based out at Moskew. It does provide them additional pool space. One of the constraints that they've clearly identified is the lack of available lane space at Moana Pool, working at capacity. They can't meet demand. They continually look for more lanes. We can't provide them additional lanes. The discussion, last discussion I had, I recall, we did talk about Moskew, if it was a 12-month pool, then they would look to use that as part of their overall swim coaching arrangements. It does provide additional capacity and particularly additional capacity over the 12-month period. We've got a number of pools that provide overflow for seven months, but not that 12-month period, which is a constraint.
Can I request that we get some information back from them and some paper from them just outlining how they see this working? Because I think they're a part of a player in the swimming pool system.
We can do that, but I think it'd be safe to say that they would have swim coaching service operating at Moskew Pool for Moskew residents.
Yeah, but also what I'm saying is obviously they're going to take, they would take some of their lane swimming away from Moana Pool. So how would that produce?
No, I think that actually more likely to meet unmet demand at the moment, but Anne may have.
Just so I know, I think it's important to remember there were two issues identified as part of the working party, products facilities working party. One was capacity constraints at Moana Pool. And the second is not only maintenance issues at Moskew Pool, but capacity constraints at Moskew Pool. So Moskew Pool is overflowing. It's open for seven months of the year. Yeah, it's just at Moskew, there's capacity constraints and demand within the Moskew community for more pool space. And that's what the different options were worked out for.
Now beyond the current Moskew pool, we've got the Tari School Pool. Are there any other pools out there?
I think there's one at Altrum in the Wharney Catchment area, Altrum, Middle March.
Is there a retirement village pool?
A question from Mick. Regarding playgrounds, you know, I'm going on a little bit of a tangent here, but when we, over the history, we had the development of the Moskew Playground. And the community raised a lot of money, got behind and supported it. And all of a sudden, you know, the playground usage obviously increased and it became a bit of a destination. Is that, I'm sort of looking at how many people travelled there from around town because I know families in Andy Bay would go out to just to go play the playground at Moskew and they still do.
Okay, I'm happy to try and answer the question. I'm not quite sure the relativity basis because of course, I guess any figures and stats we have from playgrounds is anecdotal. It's good observation because they're pretty public facilities. But of course, nobody pays to use them, so you don't really have that hard evidence on any of that. But certainly, I know from the people who put a lot of work into it, not just the Facilities Trust and Jeff Woodcock's team, but staff also, that when Moskew Playground and the extended playground was during that so-called honeymoon period, which has carried on and on, there was no discernible reduction in use of other playground facilities. But yes, it was clear evidence that it had become a destination because it was new, particularly with features like the Skynet and so forth, which there were no other at that time pieces of equipment around. So I'm not sure if that answers fully the context.
That's fine. Looking at Moana Pool and I looked at the usage numbers of who goes there and the number of visits, would you see that there's a greater number of visits per capita of the over sixty-five market per younger audience or an under sixty-five? And I'm thinking more in the terms of looking at the numbers that are put together for the DCC numbers for the Moskew Pool, saying, you know, on average, this is the numbers that we would anticipate. But I'm thinking retirees would actually be more active going to a facility like this.
We have no figures on that. The Tari Facilities Trust, in their consultation, have not exactly addressed exactly that, but they have asked questions. They have been in contact with groups and organisations who represent that age group. But we have no, I'm not aware of any breakdown of user figures that Aquatics Services has that would help in that respect.
Okay. Looking at the water safety website and political parties are looking at learn to swim programmes as a bit of a political football and the investment in school pools and things like that. Are there any other school pools slightly outside that catchment area or where learn to swim programmes could increase? Because obviously that's going to get just bigger and bigger.
At the moment in the city, there are a variety of pools used by schools for learn to swim. Gander Intermediate, Andy Bay, there's a variety of different providers in those areas. I'm not sure out in the Moskew-Tari area, the learn to swim, the swim station at Moana Pool has been very successful, large numbers through. That's the sort of the primary mechanism at the moment. But I'm aware to my own school aged children that there are the pools that are used for that purpose.
I think that's me.
Any further questions? Counselor Perry.
Yeah, thanks. Anne, thanks for putting the energy and thought into all this. Could you just remind me of the popularity rating between the leisure and the, what, leisure pool and the hydrotherapy pool?
From the trust, from the trust?
Yeah, the trusts are.
Sorry, Anne. They asked how important did people think the various options were? So the leisure and the hydrotherapy. The leisure, I think, was eighty-two percent, highly important, not important. And the hydrotherapy sixty-three percent.
Sixteen.
Learner's pool ninety-two percent, that pool eighty-seven, leisure pool eighty-two, and hydrotherapy sixty-three. There was also a nice to have option. It would be nice to have. And for the hydrotherapy pool particularly, there was quite a chunk that would be nice to have.
Right, okay. So that's, yeah, that doesn't, you probably can't answer this, but the people supporting the leisure pool would be likely to be families with young children or is that where their popularity, where its popularity, you might be measuring that against what Moana's leisure pool?
I imagine so. There was quite a range of age groups in there that responded to the survey.
Okay.
I was just going to say from a personal experience, you know, you go into the leisure pool, you tend to see families and things. You don't tend to see people going to lane swimming. So that is a different market. And certainly, I think since the leisure pool went in at Moana Pool, I'm pretty sure numbers have gone up quite a lot in terms of when that facility was put in because it provides for that mix of environment. And I think the other pools around the country have also recognised that it provides a different environment from just lane swimming, which then attracts more and then you get more people swimming in. So that's an important component.
Right, that's fine. Just in terms of the number of visits per capita, what the year numbers, so we've got, in your calculation was six point two, down from about eight something, wasn't it, that the trust had assessed. Can you tell me what Moana is? Does Moana have a calculated that? I know we've got some numbers there, but I can't do the calculation. Is it in the ballpark, in the same sort of?
We've got the net turnover admissions of six hundred and two thousand in the report. I'm not sure what to...
I'm not sure about that. The Moana isn't part of the Yardstick data, so industry uses benchmarking system by Yardstick. And then a number of pools and data for pools that use that system. The assessments for Rollaston, staff assessments, the trust assessments were done separate to that. So the benchmarking pools such as Rangiora, Gore, Amaru, those ones used Yardstick. Moana doesn't. We'd have to work out.
Okay.
Of course, to complicate it more, Moana has a gym as well, so you mix up gym admissions with that. If you look at the St Clair number, which is listed at, total of twenty-nine thousand, depending on which catchment you used and what population you get, a variety of different, again, numbers. So it is, to quote Simon, spatial plans and art, no signs.
It's complicated by the fact that five kilometre radius includes a considerable amount of ocean and sea.
Well, we did have a visitor from the ocean last night. One user from the catchment.
Just on the capital.
Couldn't pay though, that was a problem.
Capital cost side of things, you know, like others may be around this table, we're just thinking about how much we should be thinking because of the fact this might not happen for three years. And I know the bill, the bill advice was that you could up the figure by seven point five a cent. But do we have any calculation, I mean, do we know the cost of a three pool? If we, having got those figures, have we?
Page ten of twelve. If you turn to page ten of twelve, we've got in the, what the estimated cost of the different pool options is. So that's again based on best information we've got, that's in today's terms. So it's difficult to put an inflation component because if you were to go for an option in, say, three years' time as opposed to five years' time or one year, then that affects, all we can really do at the moment is put it in today's terms. And all the, I should say, all the numbers are in today's terms. And what we've tried to do with the financial system on the cost is to get that annualised total cost that takes account of debt, severance and depreciation, if we can.
Right. Is there any more questions? Counselor Thompson, you had?
I do have a motion. Yes, I don't know whether you want me to speak to that motion or...
Oh, second. We can see it.
That's good. We can hazard, I guess.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, we put it up as a secondar, so I'll invite you to speak to it.
I'll put the other glasses on.
Look, the first thing I think I want to say is that I have enormous sympathy for both the staff and trust in trying to actually put together a set of assumptions around this. Because at the end of the day, many of them are unanswerable and we've done it. And so the questions that are being put to staff, well, as I said, some of them are unanswerable. But what I'm concerned about is that we need to put something in the LTP for it to go out for consultation. And it then becomes what is a sensible position to put in the LTP. We may have an argument about whether it's sensible from a fiscal position, but is it sensible from a logical position really? I think this is a matter that has had a significant amount of work done on it. It is of significant community interest and I think we can't do it any other way than to put it out for consultation. What happens when it comes back in April, May or whenever? Well, that's another matter. I think it's also been the case that there has been quite a bit of work that's had to be done in a very short space of time. And that makes it very difficult. And I think that there's been a little bit of to and fro in the newspaper around assumptions and arguments. And that's not the best way to resolve some of these issues either. So to buy some more time to enable some of those things to be further worked on strikes me as being important. Now, I forwarded last evening to councillors a suggestion that there are more ways of looking at the funding of this pool than simply the traditional one, which is to borrow and repay over time. And I just want to comment on that. It's always frustrated me since I've been on council that we have a significant fund in the Waipori Fund, which we take a long-term average return on of about six percent. And it fluctuates up and down. We can't forecast on the basis of it. We don't know whether it's going to make seven percent one year or two percent or in fact lose money, as it has done in the past. That's not a good way to proceed. And I've always wondered why that fund couldn't be earning, be owning infrastructure to the benefit of rate payers, that as long as that infrastructure provided an appropriate return on its capital. And the difference between Waipori investing capital in infrastructure and getting an appropriate return on that and the traditional borrow and repay is quite a significant cash flow difference to council and it's cash flow that we write on. So I had a look at, well, what would be the opportunity for Waipori to put the balance of the capital required after you took out the four hundred thousand that we've already got in there and the return on the sale of the existing land? And I said for argument's sake, if it was to put that capital in at seven percent, which is a long-term return of one percent more than it's been getting, what would that do to the numbers? And so, and then you have two sets of assumptions. You have staff's assumptions around the numbers and you have the trust assumption around the numbers. And you might want to argue that each of those two, one's possibly at a more optimistic end, one's possibly at a more conservative end. And I'd expect staffs to be at a more conservative end. And so the truth may well lie somewhere in between, but it's going to be difficult to say exactly where. So I... So, I took some numbers based on the DCC doing it the traditional way, and, and I put my cost of that for rates impact for DCC and, sorry, for the trust assumptions and the staff's assumptions. I did the same thing if Waipori was to invest in it, and I'm not suggesting that's the only possible way of looking at it differently, but if that were to be the way, did the same thing. So if you look at the Waipori options, you get on the trust assumptions, having fixed their understatement of wages, because I believe they are significantly understated, you, you get a, a, a net additional impact on rates of about three hundred dot thousand a year, if you use the staff's numbers, you get a net additional impact on rates of about six hundred and fifty thousand a year. I explain all that because it goes to the heart of where seven hundred thousand comes from at the end. So what I've said is, could, could staff continue to do the work and model up this? And to look at, at it not just in the traditional borrow and repay model, but with either the notion of Waipori investing, or other options that staff might consider appropriate outside of direct DCC investment, including the involvement of city-owned trading organisations? And I put that second point in after discussions with Grant, because there may well be other things that, ways we should be looking at this too. And that we need to put a placeholder figure into the LTP if we're going to go out for consultation, and I said that that should be seven hundred thousand dollars per annum, net additional cost to rates. And that's based on the most conservative assumption of, using the Waipori example, of six hundred and fifty thousand costs, and I've said, all right, well, let's stick another fifty on. So, in my view, it could be anywhere between that and three hundred thousand dollars cost, I don't know, I don't think anyone knows, to be honest. I think we can get a clearer idea, I think we can agree more around some of the variables, but we've got to put something out there, and it's, so that is a conservative something, I think. Others may disagree, but that's, that's where it comes from.
Councilor Cal.
Can I ask the mover to add two things to this resolution? The first being the ability, in one, it says different investment options for this facility, could that report be being written in such a way that it could also apply to any other facilities, because this is a radical proposed departure, and there's no reason it should be for this facility, whatever comes out of there, funding and investment options could well be for, whatever we did at Southoun Eden for?
You have a comment, Mr McKinsey?
We actually do some, very similar currently with city property and one of those buildings for Kaahakam. So, in my view, city property is definitely an opportunity that we need considering funding.
Which, which is the other thing I wanted to add then, because this doesn't allow for city properties.
Well, that was the intent of that second point.
Yeah, but the second one. Outside of direct DCC investment, which is city properties. So, so just including.
Yeah, well, even a catchall or any other, because I, I think the point I'm trying to emphasise here is that we want staff not to feel constrained by one particular way of doing it. Putting city property in there, I, I, I was thinking of them as being a city-owned trading organisation, but if it's not technically correct, then stick city property in there as well.
So, so let's, let's just be clear, so Pan knows what we put in there, if you're agreeing to add anything, what, what's the wording?
Including the involvement of city-owned trading organisations and/or city property.
As second, I'm really happy with that second amendment. The first one, I think this is a great pilot, as in, I don't want to overcomplicate it by looking at other models necessarily immediately, just seeing if it works as a model, it can then be translated across. I'd just like, because what this encourages us to do is treat this differently by taking out what we have traditionally put in the budget, which is repayments over a period, and it makes a big difference to what we do. And if we're comparing apples with oranges, it isn't fair to have an orange in this basket that doesn't involve loan repayments, and an apple in that one that does, as, as a comparison of things we might move through for capitalising.
Question here is, do the mover and second wish to alter the wording to accommodate?
Well, look, I don't want to make, I, I perfectly take your point, and, and we don't disagree, but I think that this is a motion with regard to a specific proposal and to broaden it to, because the reason that, the reason that I've think that it could work in this proposal is because there's a revenue stream. Most of the things we invest in don't have revenue streams. I'm happy with.
Yes, and if, it sounds like whatever report we get will give us information that Mr McKinsey speaks to that, could speak to that too anyway, so.
Do you repeat that, Chris?
That, that report could well include things that we can use to, look at other things anyway, that, that it would be, some of it has got the impractical things naturally that report, doesn't it, as to how the money goes. Yes, so once you've got that report, it will be applicable.
What I'm concerned about is getting the, what wording it is that we're deciding on here, that the mover.
I'm saying that's fine, so, because I understand.
That's right.
That ground.
Okay. Councilor Z.
Yes, the, that is just the wording I want to look at, and I, I, some will think I'm being a bit pedantic, but the full range of funding and investment options for a new aquatic facility, so are we, one could say that we're leaving it to staff to choose whatever that, that aquatic facility is. I would like to say that, you know, that they are considering the options that, that have been put by the, by the, the, the pool trust, the one, two or three options that they had, rather than just choosing a option, an option.
The reason, can I say the reason I, I said it as it was, is part of my rationale for some of this was that this has all happened in a really rushed basis, and a considerable amount of the dispute is around what, what is the capacity that should be being provided, and what's the nature of that capacity, and what's, what's the impact of removing one bit versus another bit? And so, but we're up against a time constraint, we've got to stick something in the annual plan, so I think that the discussion around what the, what the facility might ultimately look like, I, I think it would benefit from some further discussion. Really, the issue that we're asking the community to give us an indication of is, is an indicative placeholder spend. So I, I understand what John's saying, and I, when I first drafted it, I was, I was saying, saying that proposed plan, but I just, I think that removes the ability to have some discussion. I don't know, I'm happy to be.
Can I just ask a question of the staff then? Two or three councils ago, we, the, the council made a decision with regards to aquatic facilities in Moskew, and, and there were a number of good arguments put forward as to why it should be there, like releasing pressure off Moana and, and one or two other issues. That information, there was a recommendation at that time for a pool, and I can't remember exactly what size it was, but that, all that work has been done. So this council has at some time, in the not-too-distant past, made a recommendation with regards to a, 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 a pool in Moskew anyway. Now, I, I mean, am I, am I right in suggesting that? Nick, you'll, I'm sure you'll agree that, that was, and Tony, you'll remember, you'll recall that information going through? Whether I was the chairman of that, a working party that did a lot of work over a number of years.
The, it's in the report itself, there's a resolution from September two thousand and thirteen, at the time, as I recall it, there was, the council adopted, looked for funding for investigation works into the preferred Moskew pool option. Was it a two pool, three pool? I can't remember what option it was, it wasn't specified.
It was vague, I don't investigate.
Yeah, but the decision at the time was to not, was to go for a new Moskew pool option, and investigate the size of it, I suppose, as I recall it, rather than upgrade the existing pool, and to make it twelve months, but I don't have the details at heart.
If I can further to a earlier point, just for clarification, I guess out of respect to the work that the trust has done, I think it's important to note that they, for everyone, that their proposal is, is, is a proposal based on options, the options presented here have been put together by staff. Two, three and four options, the Tyree Trust proposal is focused on an option.
Well, just, I've had a little time to reflect, while John was continuing to talk, and it, given the, the time constraint, it may be that we should be more specific in this for the purposes of consultation, it doesn't stop staff, the trust, and continuing to, to, to look at the what-ifs and, and things over the next few months, but that is, the, the trust proposal is, if you like, the most extensive option, and the one with the most cost implications, so maybe it is better that it state for a new aquatic, for, for the proposed aquatic, for the Tyree Trust proposed aquatic facility, just to be specific. That's then what we're consulting on, but it doesn't stop the engagement and discussion there taking place between now and when that comes back.
Can I make a point there, though, that if, for instance, the investigations by staff found that they could make some funding and investment options work for a different option, it's not asking them to do that, it's just, they might come back and say, you've looked at this and it doesn't work, whereas the investigator, by legal.
Making things up on the spot.
Sorry?
Making things up on the spot.
Well, I'm suggesting that this allows staff to look at a wider range of things than just one option.
What if, what if? If one stated as it was, and two, somebody said that council put a placeholder budget impact in two eighteen nineteen financial year beyond seven hundred thousand per annum, based on the Tyree Trust's current proposal? That doesn't stop any of that.
Question of just clarification, the Tyree Trust proposal, if you take the document, has a whole lot of different sets of financials and assumptions, and there's a physical four pool option, the entire trust proposal includes that in, the funding and the revenue and the cost and everything else, so it's a question of is it the four pool option as outlined, or?
Well, that's what I.
Yeah, yeah, we clearly don't mean based on finances that we go and agree with, so if, if we need to talk to them about changing some of those financial projections and stuff, we will, but you mean based on the current pool projection?
I don't know what the correct figure is, I'm saying, if I, if you do it, if you do it with Waipori investing at seven percent, it looks to me like the rates impact is somewhere between staff's assessment, six hundred and fifty odd thousand, because I'm taking out various things, and the trust's proposal adjusted for the error in wages of about three hundred thousand, so, and I've said that I've just put a placeholder figure in that's actually slightly more than the trust, than the staff's assumption.
Okay, who are the speakers to this?
Oh, I just tweaked the end of that, if that's okay, so basically it's saying based on the four pool option, is Peter.
Councilor, Councilor Vandis.
I'm still not sure whether the Moskew pool is a goer or not, and not even sure whether we should be putting it in the plan, but what I am sure of is that we're treading on very dangerous ground when we as councillors set ourselves up as Waipori investment management specialists. Investing money, which is what the Waipori Fund does, is a very specialist area, and if those people running the Waipori Fund and who have seemed to have made a fairly good job of it in recent years saw an investment opportunity in their local swimming pool, I'm sure that they would consider it. They do have a bias for local projects rather than international ones, but they spread their risk as all good investment managers should, and they tend to operate reasonably conservatively. The idea of using Waipori as a way of reducing our debt was, was proposed by councillor Thompson last year, and, and this is another way of doing it. The people who were in a position to know or give us best advice last year didn't think that using the Waipori Fund as a way of reducing our debt was a good idea, and I'm not, I don't think that we as councillors should elevate ourselves to the position where we are making investment decisions on behalf of the Waipori Fund. And for that reason, I, I can't vote for this, although I have sympathies with the need for a community pool at Tyree.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, I can support, support the resolution. I was describing it as perhaps a nimble approach in terms of financial kind of approach. I learned to swim in the Moskew Pool, and, and I am astounded that it's still there, even though it's looking like a milking shed these days. No, I don't, do I? It's all that swimming. But I do think, I mean, overwhelmingly, there is a demand for a new aquatic facility in Moskew, there is no doubt about that, and all of us, I think, congratulate the trust for, for doing, doing that consultation with the community, which was extensive, very comprehensive, and.
Shows a very clear result.
A huge demand for, for an improved swimming pool. So I'm happy to, to see this progress, even though it's probably not as fast as, it may not happen as fast as the trust would like.
Councilor T.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question of the mover and second in the first instance, and that is in relation to the water and waste issues which have been highlighted by staff. Is it the, the intention of the mover and second that those people have put it back to us, or is the interest only on financials?
This is a financial meeting, I think there's a whole lot of other groundwork that would resource considering everything else, which also has to be net that is outside of the purview of this council meeting. So those are all important and necessary parts of it, this is a financial meeting as far as I'm concerned.
So, in, in relation to that, and, and coming to a final decision about the nature of the financial investment which this council would be making, is it also the mover and second's view that we would need some information about the potential impact that that might have on our waste facilities, and any financial impacts there are?
Well, yes, I mean, staff would come back in a few months' time and tell us there's no water in Moskew and we can't do it, and, I'm sorry, I'm being facetious, but I mean, of course, I mean, I, I just think we're trying to work out what it is that we're putting in an annual plan, sorry, LTP for, for consultation, and I would expect, I've alluded several times to the short period of time that staff are prepared to actually respond to the trust proposal, I would expect the full information about anything that impacted on it before we made any final decision.
Right, so when, when we talk about the full range of funding and investment options, that's not all you're expecting to be reported back before we make a final decision, that is in addition to any strategic considerations which council might need to take.
Mr Abi.
I think if you've chosen the four pool option, and that gives us a very clear pool that you can model up in terms of water, wastewater, and if there are any game changes in that, then we'll report, report back, and if there's an additional cost required from the city to service that, then we'll also identify that, because it's an, an infrastructural cost that's associated with the pool. The difficulty at the moment has been there are so many different options, it becomes problematic to try and model all of them. So we would look to model the four pool option, we know the, the volume and suchlike, we'd do some modelling, and I'd include that as part of the total cost envelope that the council would need to meet, because it would be a servicing cost that we'd need to find somewhere.
Thank you. We're speaking to it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so thank you for that, thank you, mover and secondor for that clarification. Given that I can support one, I think there is merit in considering all range of options for funding any community infrastructure. And I think looking into these options is a worthwhile endeavour. And I thank councillor Thompson for dreaming them up. And to Mr Mackenzie for highlighting the similarities with the city property, existing city property arrangements. I do think that there is a danger in, for different reasons than councillor Vandervas, in the investment structure to any sort of arrangement. And the reason for that is because I think the focus can too easily become the return on investment, rather than the outcomes for the community or any alignment with strategy, which I think should be our primary considerations as a public entity when designing facilities for the community. I note that a couple of other situations in which we have effectively investment, yeah, investment situations in the sense of the landfill and our parking facilities. It does constrain to a degree our decision-making on those facilities because of the structure of our investment in them. So I think there is a danger in it. But that being said, I think it is worth considering and worth looking into. And I acknowledge that there is a difference between a landfill and a pool. So I'm, yeah, I will look forward to seeing that work coming back. In relation to two, I personally find it difficult to support this at this point in time. And we're no friends in Moscow. But I don't intend to be a councillor that supports the spatial plan when it suits me and avoids supporting it when it doesn't suit me. So that is the basis upon which I find it hard at this point to support the four-pool option. I think there are some very real questions about whether or not that is an appropriate size of infrastructure to be putting in an outlying settlement. I have yet to have those questions answered. And until those questions are answered for me, I will continue to find it difficult to support that. I think in terms of our spatial plan, it is very clear that we want one destination centre for the, for our city, and that that is the CBD. There are a number of reasons for this. It reduces pressure on existing infrastructure. And the water and waste issues, the potential water and waste issues that have been highlighted, I think one of the possible outcomes which I would like to avoid. It does minimise travel and the expenses that come with that. And in the long run, it minimises costs to ratepayers because of the infrastructure costs that are avoided. But it also is about maintaining the vibrancy of our central business district and our urban core. And for all of those reasons, I think the spatial plan is an important touchstone when we're making decisions like this one. And we should, we would do well to consider it as we make strategic decisions about the size of facilities that we put in outlying areas. I think the risk with this is that we start to split the destination status between Moscow and the CBD. And whilst I think that could be done in a complementary way, I'm not confident that this proposal does that. And I have concerns that it would further raise the cost of infrastructure for ratepayers across the city. And I'm not comfortable with that. So whilst I am looking forward to the consultation on it, I probably will lose the vote against too. I, it will take a lot to convince me that the four-pool option is an appropriate one. And until that information is provided, I find it unable to support it.
councillor Kelly.
There's two things I particularly like about this pair of resolutions. I like that we're having a better look into funding and investments. And I like the innovative approach to what we can do and getting to something to put in the actual plan. What I am concerned about is that it deals effectively with an ongoing income situation and sort of might allow people to imagine that we're not actually borrowing seven and a half million or whatever it is. We're fudging the idea that we're doing something that amounts to borrowing that money if we go ahead with an option that has us investing in our own pool. Because the effect of that is that we're taking money out of another pile and it's a debt increase in all but name. So I wouldn't want people to imagine that that somehow made, there was an innovative financial way that made that increased borrowing effect go away. I don't know whether that's what people are thinking. But if people are only thinking that because somehow we could end up with a ten-year plan that just has seven hundred thousand a year and each year or something, that it doesn't have a capital effect, it does. It's effectively like borrowing that money whichever way you shake it. The other thing I'd like to say is it seems to me that it's not us, if we support a pool or a series of pools in Moscow, it's not us telling the Moscow people that they shouldn't come into Dunedin and send to a vibrant city though it is. It's them having voted with their feet. It's the only part of Dunedin that's growing. They've chosen already to live in Moscow and to like it out there. They shouldn't be obliged to come into town just because we have a strange feeling about that they should use extra oil, however much the oil costs, to bring themselves into town, rather than to stay in Moscow, Moscow's where they've chosen. And it's the only place in Dunedin that they're really choosing with any enthusiasm to live. So I don't see why we should discourage them from that choice. And it seems to me it's like to reduce the cost of people using cars and the parking in Dunedin if they can do more things in Moscow. So I think that's all good.
councillor Tucker.
Being an old Moscow boy, and like councillor Pete having actually swum in the Moscow pool, but well before it got the koshet over the outside of it. I think there is a need in Moscow for an aquatic facility. I do have the same concerns as councillor McTavish, that what is being proposed is an aquatic centre, it's a destination. It's not so much a community facility to cater for the fact that it's a lot more difficult for some Moscow residents to get to Moana, which is our main aquatic facility. So I do have some concerns around that. But I can support these resolutions because they will give us greater clarity over what it is in financial terms that we will be having to look at. We will learn a little more, I expect, about what is an appropriate facility. And thirdly, we are recognising as a council that there is an issue. I have some concerns around the Waipori investment. Not in the fact that on an annual basis, the return would not be better than the long-term return. But there is still a capital question. So while the pool is operating for twenty or thirty years or however long a pool lives, getting that return is fine, but sooner or later, the capital must be repaid. And at seven percent, I'm not sure that that guarantees the return against the capital for the investor. But the modelling will give us a bit more information. I think in a situation like we've got in our city at the moment, where we're constrained in funding, yet we have a high pressure for some form of aquatic facility in Moscow, then it does behoove council to look at all of the possible options that may be able to deliver it. And who knows, we might find a solution that has a lesser rates impact and does deliver a good facility in Moscow.